Thank you. Good evening. We're going to reconvene into open session with a comment from City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the City Council went into closed session. The items identified on the 4:30 agenda, with respect to Item 1A, the case of Shenbaum and O'Brien versus the City of Manhattan Beach, the City Council gave direction to the City Attorney. And with respect to Item IC, Public Employment, the City Council gave direction to our city's independent recruiter with respect to the city manager position. There was no other reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn from closed session, and I welcome you to City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM. And can we have Noah and Gabriel Segal, who are going to be coming up to give the pledge? Ms. Talene, you're off the hook. Can you hear that? You hear, okay. Great. Well, the reason we're in here, in our new sauna, is because the main council chamber is going through a major renovation of all of its electronics and presentation equipment. So, we're going to be back in that room possibly by... Oh, one more meeting here September 3rd, and then after that, we'll be back in chambers. But, I wanted to say that these two gentlemen are actually no strangers to come to the City Council meetings. And so, where did we meet you before?
You met me at, I mean, a couple year, a year ago. I was at a community event. Uh...
That is true. It is machine language. Okay, you all here have phones, right? These phones have a chip, and that chip, you write code to talk to it. And then it's code to talk to that code, and code to talk to that code. Coding is just a way to write the apps that everybody uses on the basis. It can do so much else. It's a tool. It's a tool that you can use to create the things you see in your phone and your computer, pretty much, if you want a simplified explanation of it. When we, when I say we teach these kids coding, what that means is that we teach them what goes into making the software that they use. Like, I'm not sure there's many gamers here, but, um, okay. But, most kids are very, and they're, you know, Fortnite, Minecraft, Roblox, probably all your children, they're screaming about those. And, uh, we teach them what makes those tick. How do you make your own game? It's often the pool we, well, it's often the pool we have for getting these kids in. If we were trying to attract maybe older adults, I think a better example would be, oh, you use the weather app all the time, right? How does the weather app know what weather it's gonna be? Well, satellites, but also coding.
That's just terrific. Thank you so much. So, on behalf of my City Council colleagues and I, we want to present you with a certificate of recognition for the founder and CEO of Code to Grow. And, you know, so if something goes wrong with my cellphone, you're the guy to go to?
I already, I already knew IT was going to be a little crazy.
Ah, that's great. So, colleagues, if you can join me up here?
Yes.
And then, we're going to need a 10-minute recess after this for IT to sort of catch up with us.
Can you help them with that?
Yeah.
Sounds like we're recording on vinyl.
It does.
Check, one, two. Checking Zoom audio, checking. Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two. Checking podium mic, checking. Checking podium mic. Are we good? Testing, one, two, three, four. Testing, one, two, three, four. Testing, testing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think we're good.
You know, and that's true. And that was the cleanest one, and I agree.
Test.
That's an anomaly.
I know it. No, I, no, you know, let's check. You're right. And, I'm just, the only reason I was thinking that is if the...
You know what? I'm going to do something.
Okay. Yeah, I like that.
I know, Sharon, it's a joke.
Okay, great. Well, once again, we're here at the City Council regular meeting for August 20th, 2024, and we need a roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Here.
Mayor Franklin?
Here. Okay, and, um, we, um, need, so moving on to Letter E, Approval of Agenda and Waiver of Full Reading of Ordinances.
I'll move.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Howard, and a second by...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Going to pull Item 5, Your Honor.
Okay.
So, we're jumping on, did we do?
Hmm?
We jumped ahead to ceremonial, so just making sure. So, on that, yeah, I'm going to pull Item 5, Your Honor.
All set?
Okay. Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And Item F, City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. You have one minute. Yeah, the podium's back there.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf...
I think we need sound on the podium.
We need animal control, too.
There we go. I think that's better.
It's a canine.
Is that better? Oh.
There you go. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the adults of the community to a Wikipedia Edit-a-Thon on Saturday, August 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Whether you're new to Wikipedia or an experienced editor, please join Wiki LA in making culture and knowledge free for all at the Edit-a-Thon focused on ocean life and LA's connection to the sea. Many articles without global interest remain incomplete, inaccurate, or even non-existent. Your contributions will be the first and potentially only piece of information people see on a given topic. No experience is necessary, and tutorials will be provided for Wikipedia newcomers. Experienced editors will be providing help with editing throughout the event. Please bring a laptop if you're able, and a limited number will be provided. Take advantage of resources at Manhattan Beach Library and help Wikipedia make the Internet a better place. Refreshments will be provided by the Friends of the Manhattan Beach Library, and this event is intended for adults. Registration is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Napolitano is running for dog catcher.
About the same, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmembers, City officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell. I am the recycling educator for WM, the company previously known as Waste Management for Richard, for the beautiful city of Manhattan Beach. Just here with an update. Two weekends ago, we had our paper shred event. We assisted over 220 Manhattan Beach residents safely and securely shred their paper, their documents. We collected over 6,480 pounds of documents safely shredded and then recycled. This weekend, we are current, last weekend and this week, we are currently doing our lunchbox dispersal, I guess you can call it, to all our kindergarten students incoming at all our public schools. And that is my favorite part of this job. I get to see happy faces. That's all I got. Have a great night. God bless.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure, yes.
Bobby, so when you say, uh, your lunchbox, you're going around to our schools and handing out free reusable, you know, lunchboxes, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Yeah, we, we get a head count for boys and girls, and there's, they're very, one of the things we like about it is that they have little bento boxes inside each one of them. So, we're trying to do away with little plastic sandwich bags. And it's also just seeing new kids come to the school, they're scared, and you get to look at the list and say their name, and they're like, "Oh, yeah." Like, "Oh, man, Granview's so excited you're here. Hey, I got something for you. Pick out which one you want." It's honestly the best part of my job.
Super fun. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one question to Bobby.
Sure.
Bobby, don't go anywhere. How long you been doing the free lunchbox?
I've been in Manhattan Beach, it'll be two years in November previous to that. I think it's been going on since the contract was signed.
Right, Anna?
Yes, sir.
12, yeah, so, 13 years. Thank you very much.
Yes, and we purchase them locally through a company, Go Green Lunchboxes. A gentleman, Hinman, lives within two miles of City Hall.
Thank you, with 13 years of lunchboxes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Katie Dougherty. I am the City Engineer. I'd like to provide a brief update on parking lot structure three. This is the lot that's located at Morningside and 12th Street here in the downtown area. The lot is currently closed due to some structural concerns. It is, it has been temporarily shored, which means that some temporary posts have been placed next to the existing posts, to temporarily secure the building while we move forward with figuring out what the best option for the structure is, both in the near term and with the long-term project that we're planning for the structure some years out. Center Place next to the structure is also closed to vehicle traffic. Pedestrian traffic is still allowed, so all of the rear entrances to those businesses in that area are still accessible, and including Wright Tribe, the retail store there that's only accessible from Center Place is also still open and in operation. We do have a shuttle service that was previously operating out of Pacific Elementary that will be relocating, relocated to the Manhattan Village Shopping Center. It's the north entrance near Macy's. That's a free shuttle, and that has been extended through September 8th. We are diligently working on researching parking solutions in the area for the community as we get through, you know, the issue with the structure. And staff is planning to return to council on September 3rd to discuss next steps for the structure. So, I'm, well, I'm happy to take any questions if you'd like, but we'll be back on the 3rd.
Colleagues? I have one. Do we, can you sort of give us an idea of why this happened or how it happened?
Yeah, the parking structure was built in 1971. I think general rule of thumb, the useful life for a, any structure is 50 years. So, with that, and combined with the marine environment, we had been noticing some degradation of the structure over the past several years. We've had structural engineers out on a regular basis to do an assessment of the structure, and most recently, when they came out, there was some pretty severe corrosion on the columns, holding up the third level and the staircases, which, which resulted in us closing the structure immediately.
Okay, great, yes.
Just one question.
Councilmember Lesser?
How many spaces, then, are we without with the entire lot now shut down?
I believe the number is about 170...
146.
146, thank you, Talene.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, piggyback or amplify what you're saying. I know that staff is working really hard on lots of creative ideas. You know, it's not just how to shore up or how, what to do with that structure, but, you know, it's really unfortunate you had kind of a perfect storm, if you will, this past weekend with the AVP and everything being closed down, and, you know, everybody was working around the clock to try to accommodate all the visitors. And it's, it's a really, it is, it's not just an inconvenience, staff is aware, but, you know, five, four of the top 25 sales tax producers in our community are in downtown. And so, we're talking about real dollars when their customers, et cetera, can't find parking. So, I just, I want to commend staff for all you're doing, day and night, to try to think of something to do, and I want to reassure businesses. to try to think of something to do, and I wanna reassure businesses that we are taking it very seriously, and also our residents. So we're all gonna have to suffer a little bit, I think, to try to fix it. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Councilmember Montgomery.
Those of you that sent an email to me asking when the parking structure would be demolished, it's gonna be discussed September 3rd, as you heard earlier. We've heard a lot of good ideas, what we can and cannot do. But before you get excited, I think it's not just a quick knock down and pave over it temporarily. It takes a little longer than that. The amount of concrete it takes to move all of that, you can't do it in one day, folks. I know it looks easy. Not like a house. It's not that easy. So bear with us to be patient, and here are the options. It's September 3rd. Thank you, Your Honor.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Any more, any more public comments here? How about online? Oh, well, no, no, not, not yet. I'm sorry. Community announcements, sorry. How about online?
Mr. Mayor, we do have Enriquez with an announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, Captain Enriquez, your operations captain for the police department. Just here to give an update on two things. One, July 1, we started a full-time bicycle enforcement team. Their picture's up there. It's Officer Patrick Orde and Sidney Wyble. They work Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday right now, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There it is. And so their primary focus is bicycle enforcement throughout the entire city. You've probably seen them around downtown. Their goal is to get out into the businesses, some of the commercial areas, so they'll ride all over, up into the, to the malls, the residential. They can get a lot of places when the traffic's there and not worry about that. In addition to that, I want to provide council with some updates on some of the citation information that I have from July 1, I'm sorry, January 1 to July 31st of this year. Year-to-date, we've written 218 bicycle citations in, in the city, and that includes, we conducted four directed enforcement days specifically in Manhattan Beach. I spoke about this before, where we partner with other cities in the South Bay. Sometimes we'll go to their city and help them with directed enforcement. Other times, they'll come to us. So in February, March, April, and May, we hosted here in Manhattan Beach, and we had bicycle directed enforcement days, which yielded a significant amount of citations. In addition to that, our parking and animal control officers have been focusing their efforts throughout the day on dogs that are on the beach or dogs that are off-leash, and in that same timeframe, January 1 to July 31st of this year, they've written 153 citations. So that doesn't count the number of people they've contacted. That's just the number of people who have earned that citation through their efforts.
Okay, great. Is there any, I'm sure hand-in-hand, you, you know, you give out warnings and the like. What's your sense of compliance with the rules, especially by the children riding the bikes? Do you getting a sense that, you know, more are listening, or?
I, I mean, I get, you know, this is a, unfortunately, it's not, it's not just a police issue. This is a, a whole community issue, where we're gonna need help from residents, parents, everybody involved, the kids themselves, the school district, and so everybody's sort of been in this collaborative partnership to get these things taken care of. I personally think that we're doing a, we're having an impact. In the recent, I'd say the last two months, the actual citations have gone down, which, if you, if you think about it in one way, that could look bad, like we're not doing enough, but in another way, that's because people are complying now. We, we focused a lot in the beginning on education and enforcement, I'm sorry, education, and now we've focused a lot on the enforcement, and I think a lot of that effort has really gone through with us now to where people are complying and at least not doing it in Manhattan Beach. I can't speak for the other beach cities, but I think in our city, it's, it's improving. I think everybody's sort of finally on board with this problem and trying to solve it.
Okay, and, and can you just describe some of the efforts to work with our, you know, your counterparts in Hermosa and Redondo?
Sure.
So that we have sort of a unified...
Yeah, so myself, I attend a monthly meeting with the captains for the other cities in the South Bay, and we discuss what, what's going on in our city. We willingly send our bicycle enforcement team, our traffic officers, to other cities to help them on their directed enforcement days, and in turn, they willingly send people to us. And so we've had people from Gardena Police, Hawthorne, Inglewood, come in, in addition to Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, and El Segundo to help us with the enforcement, and, and our officers have gone out to those cities to help them. And I think those partnerships are really helping also on those directed enforcement days.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I just wanna remind people is when you see a child doing the right thing, compliment them. I mean, that kind of positive enforcement, especially on their helmets, they have it strapped, they stopped at a stoplight. I had a great experience with a kid on a bike, or two, two kids on a bike, and they had their helmets on and everything, and there was a left-hand turn, you know, from Manhattan Beach Boulevard onto Ardmore, and, and the passenger in the back said, "Go on, go on, go ahead and go." And she said, "No, no, no, it's a red light." And I just about, you know, fell down on the ground and, you know, but, and it, it turned out that, you know, so, so the one young lady said to me, you know, "You know my, my mom, you, you and my mom know each other," you know, "and she told us to do this because of what the city, you know, wants us to do." So it is getting through, but just positive reinforcement really helps, because, you know, they don't always hear that. So, thank you. And thank you, Captain. Appreciate that. Any announcements online?
There are no requests on Zoom.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, okay, yeah, all right. Thank you. Just wanna remind everybody that in Manhattan Beach, Manhattan Beach Unified School District starts tomorrow, so be on the lookout for all the kids walking to school, riding their bikes safely with their helmets strapped to school, and exciting time of year, but those kids are out there on the streets, so be mindful. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, Councilmember Montgomery.
Two things, just a shout-out to our MB Parks and Rec Department. Most of you saw what happened this weekend. It's called the AVP slash Manhattan Beach Open Volleyball Tournament. So those of you that are trivia buffs, MB Open started in 1960. That's 6-0, okay? Back then, Steve was back there making some headlights, trying to knock cars so they could play at nighttime.
I wasn't born yet.
Yeah. But the AVP itself started in 1984, and it continued stronger than ever. So a shout-out to Jeff Conover, Archie Sherman, under Mark Lehman's authority, that they made it happen, and Waste Management making sure. We saw all those cans out there, never full, which is good to do when you have 10,000 people show up. That's a lot of things to watch. MB Parks, you don't see behind the scenes. You saw the TV version, just more happens behind the scenes that you're on the sand, those people never see. Tepid and Fire being there, it was a seamless operation that we see on the ground, but thank you all. For those of you who showed up, you know what I'm talking about. It's fantastic. And the second thing, and Mr. Mayor won't say it, most of you understand, we have an election coming up, City Council. Three seats, November 5th, right? Three seats. We know the mayor's gonna run, so he won't say anything. We have six candidates, actually five that have never run for office before. It's amazing. With the exception of the mayor, we have five first-time candidates running. So do your homework, find out who they are. Three men, three women. Ask them whatever you'd like. Open season. Ask them whatever you'd like to ask them, things that matter to you, about the city going forward, and see what they say, because every one of your votes make a difference. I can tell you that. All of us here know that every vote makes a difference. So, good luck. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you. And so we move on to public comments. So, three minutes per person, and if you speak about a subject that's later on in the agenda, you won't be able to, if you speak your public comment now, you won't be able to speak it when that agenda items. You just get one, one shot at the apple, as they say.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Stefan Kampa here. Two items. One is, on the parking structure, it would be wonderful on September 3rd if we could also talk about what other buildings we have of the city that are nearing that same age that might be at risk, so that if we have other ones coming down with these types of issues, we would be aware of those, and what are we doing to understand what those issues are. The second item is, we have the Olympics coming in 2024. I'm not sure what we've planned as a city to address those.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry. But I, I think, thank you for the correction there. Twenty-eight. But I, I'm suggesting that we take maybe a, a subcommittee of some sort to start looking at what should we do as a city to prepare for this, so we're not caught off guard. We have some lead time, but it's gonna come very quickly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jeremy Stern, and I'm the president of Congregation Teakvath Jacob, 1829 North Sepulveda. I'm here to thank the city. Sometimes you get complaints. I wanna make sure you get a, a thank you. And on August 6, it was a, it was a beautiful afternoon, and we had an alarming, frightening security incident at Manhattan, at Congregation Teakvath Jacob. A drone was flying in the area, which is not atypical in Manhattan Beach, especially down at the beach. But when it lowered itself over our parking lot for a long time, and at a suspiciously low level, when our preschool kids were out there playing in the, in the parking lot, we became very, very alarmed, especially given the, the rise of anti-Semitic events in Manhattan Beach. So we called the police, and Lieutenant Andy Harris sent out a squad car, and Officer Derek San Agustin responded, took a report quickly, and got it filed with the detective bureau. And the next day, I got a call from a detective whose name is too long to remember, but he, I gave him some more facts, and the next day, he called to let us know everything was resolved, and that there was no threat to CTJ at the time. And as it turns out, it's a commercial operator that was doing a site survey for a real estate company, but it was unknown to us at the time. And so we are so thoroughly grateful for the efforts of Manhattan Beach Police Department. They're an amazing partner, and we are all in, everyone in Manhattan Beach is, we, we are so grateful for their efforts on, on CTJ's behalf and on the community's behalf. So I wanna say thank you. And I also wanted to offer a quick suggestion, and that is, had we known that the drone was gonna be in the area, I wouldn't, I think it would have eliminated a lot of anxiety and angst about it. And so I'm wondering, and ask that the city take a look at its UAV ordinance and see if it's possible to require drone operators to give notice when they're flying an operation in an area within a close range of a, a school or public playground, and see, see what you can do about that. Anyways, thank you again so much, and appreciate everything that you do and our PD does for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Anybody else here? Public comment? Yeah, go ahead and, yeah, you're good.
Mayor, Councilman. My name is Eric Engelmann, 51-year resident, the same address in Manhattan Beach, and what I'm gonna, what I wanna talk about happened almost that long ago. My first, first I'd like to ask a question of the, of the council members, mayor, and staff. How many have lived in the town for 50 years or more? One. Maybe you remember, maybe you remember one summer in the 70s when a couple of well-meeting local residents decided that the problem in Manhattan Beach was limited access. Such a nice town, such a nice beach, we need to provide more access. So they made an arrangement, I don't know who provided the money or the transportation, but they arranged for the parking lot a TRW. Does it ring a bell? And they bused people down here, and it was, it was, it, it became more like Venice Beach, and it really overwhelmed our local capabilities. And I'm sure there's no policemen who were here that long ago, and, but I don't remember all the numbers, but I, my recollection was, there was a couple of rapes or so, more than a couple of people thrown off the pier, a couple of stabbings, and a police presence at the head of the pier for the whole summer. And, you know, it was, it was pretty disturbing for a lot of people, and, and I don't know how many, how many weeks or months it went on, because I wasn't directly involved. It was just something I observed. And so what I, what I wanna suggest is that we got someone here from the, from the engineer's office, and people familiar with parking. I know we have a, a brand-new problem now with our parking structure out of service, so I can see we wanna provide a little additional parking. But I think it's a good idea to, for the city officials, engineering, to stay in touch with police, and make sure that the things aren't getting, that, basically, the Manhattan Beach, I worked in Venice for eight years as a fire captain, so you, you don't have to tell you much about Venice. And I, and that summer, Manhattan Beach looked more like Venice than Manhattan Beach, and I don't wanna see it again come to that point. So I, I would like to just suggest, I don't want any feedback or anything, but just suggest that, that the members and the engineering and police and stuff stay in contact with each other and observe if, if we're overwhelming our local, our local police and fire and, and paramedic facilities during, during a particular summer, or during this particular summer, so to get a handle on things and, and slow, slow down all the busing and parking aid before it gets out of hand. Hopefully, it'll go well this summer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Afternoon, evening. My name is Rick Farrell, and I've been in Manhattan Beach 51 years, Eric, so, that's right. Same house. January. I like Eric. Eric's part of the discussion group, of Steve's discussion group with the, with the city, and we have a great time together. The reason I'm here today is that I'm very lucky, because I was lucky enough, a lucky break, to meet Richard Montgomery way before he became a councilman, when he was a volunteer, and my wife was president of the Hometown Fair, and we were pretty active at that time, because we came here in 1972. And Richard brought to, I don't know, he has a, has a humor that is unstoppable. He's uplifts everybody that he's, he's working with. We, we saw that immediately, as a volunteer, okay? And then I, in 1999, I retired as a manufacturer's rep after 30 years, and I got bored, and I said, "Hey, I gotta do something." And Suzie said, my wife said, "Well, Richard is a commercial real estate appraiser. Why don't you try that?" And I said, "Okay." So I just happened to be taking a course that he was teaching, so, so, so Richard gave me a terrific beginning, and everybody said, "You know, Rick, you know a lot about what you used to do, the industry you used to do, but you know nothing about real estate." And I said, "You know what? I got Richard, number, number one, and number two. I have 150 warehouses in Los Angeles that I did business with, and they all are gonna buy and sell property." So we did actually sign one deal, okay? But anyway, Richard, the reason that I wanted to give a shout-out to Richard is a lot of you, a lot of people have seen him at council, day in and day out, make great decisions. Not that it's been easy, but what I wanna share with you, with, I got 101 minute left, 1:25. I've been with Rotary for, since 2010, and Richard was there way before that. So I've no, I've seen him in action at Rotary, and it hasn't been easy, because he's a councilman, he's pretty busy. He always does the job at Rotary. He does the extra work. He does the extra service. And the thing is, I can tell you, you know, I'm giving away a lot of family secrets, but the, whoever the president is, every year, at the end of the session or before, he says, "Hey, wait a minute. Let's hear from Richard," right, "and find out what's going on in the city." Well, Richard's gone, because he leaves early, okay, because he's, he's got other things to do. So the bottom line is, Richard is a real asset to Rotary, and the bottom line is that, you know, during this pandemic, not only did we have an era of uncertainty, but an era of danger, and all the things that were happening, that we had no idea what was, how was, was good, what the outcome was gonna be. Richard, every single morning, Monday morning, at Zoom meetings, was calm, cool, collected, had all the information from the county, state, everything, as I say, and gave a, a little synopsis, and other people had a chance to talk, too. We had a lot of doctors on call in Rotary, and they were also able to answer a lot of questions. But anyway, so anyway, Richard, you should know that. We're gonna miss Richard, and we hope to get him back in the council in the future.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. I'm not leaving till December, but thank you.
Applause is allowed. Very nice. We all need a rich share all our lives.
My agent.
Campaign manager.
That's a hard act to follow. Any, anybody else? How about online?
There are no requests on Zoom.
Okay.
Wait, my mom's gonna call in now.
Yeah.
Mom.
Okay. So we're going to close public comments and we go to item H, which is the consent calendar.
Move to approve items two through seven, your honor, exception of item number five.
Number five. So we have a motion by Councilmember Montgomery to approve with the exception of item number five and seconded by Councilmember Lesser, but I do need to read something before we take a vote. And that is, prior to the approval of the consent calendar, I have an oral announcement related to item number four, which relates to establishing the salary for the acting city manager, Talen Mirzakhanian. Ms. Mirzakhanian will be paid a monthly salary of $27,673 and will continue to receive other benefits as provided by the Unrepresented Employees Compensation Plan and her employment agreement. So we can move on to a vote.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, so we move on to item I, which is items removed from the consent calendar and that would be item number five by Councilmember Montgomery.
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Napolitano.
But I will echo everything that was said about Richard. All jokes aside, that was very kind of you to come down and say that because we don't hear much of that and he's a great guy, deserves all of it, thank you. Item number five, those consideration of a commercial encroachment permit. My issue with this item is just for council, but also for the public. I just think that the, we need some more information for folks to digest. This is an encroachment permit, I understand, but it's in conjunction with some of the use permit conditions, including hours of operation. While it doesn't affect the encroachment permit, we don't know what those are from the staff report on the surface. I think it should be included in that. I think the square footage change should be laid out so that we understand what that is. And like I said, not just for us, we're experienced at reading these things and reading through the resolutions and everything, but I think for the public, they deserve to have what the difference is because, you know, approval of the encroachment, it's an outside, encroachment on the outside. And so I think folks should know, you know, how much it's going to increase, how late they might be open outside, et cetera, et cetera. So my motion would be to continue it to the next hearing, just beef up the staff report, bring that back.
I had some similar questions and actually had an email exchange with Acting Director Heiss and I'm just wondering if maybe there, it looks like there might even be a PowerPoint deck, if we might want to have that presentation, see because it is properly noticed, it is on the agenda. And my hope would be that through the presentation, which I've not seen because it's not in our packet, it might indicate exactly where this easement is and where will continue to be under the proposed project.
Sure, Planning Manager Adam Finestone's here to provide that information.
But let me confirm with Councilmembers.
Before we do that, my motion is to continue if there's a second for that. If not, then continue on with the, yeah.
Can I just clarify, your reason for continuing is just more time to review the material or?
It's to revise the staff report to include the details so that the public knows exactly what the differences are between what exists and what they're asking for.
I'm fine with that. I mean, and I would assume it could include the PowerPoint and all of that. Okay, great. I'll second that.
I just have a comment that I had expressed similar concerns as well. That's being a well-traveled path, it's got, it's actually the first eating establishment that's on Manhattan Beach Boulevard directly, not the ones with the, not considering the ones at Metlocks, but if you're walking down, you know, you know, if you're heading west on Manhattan Beach Boulevard on the north side of the street, you're going to be going past there. So there's a lot of activity there in that corner, so. So we have a motion by Councilmember Napolitano to bring this back and it's seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. Moving on to J, item J, public hearings, there are none. Moving on to K, general business. Item number eight, discussion of options for city identity monument, street identity, post-mounted, parking identity, freestanding and vehicle direction signs. Otherwise known as wayfinding.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, City Engineer Katie Doherty will give the presentation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. Katie Doherty, City Engineer. I will flip to the first slide. I wanted to mention first that I have Cliff Selbert with Selbert Perkins Design here with us today. He's going to be giving probably the bulk of this presentation, but I'll, I'll introduce some of the history behind the item and why we're, why we're here. So this effort was started back in 2014. Did it flip to the next slide? It's off. One second. How do we turn it on? There we go. And during the, the lifecycle of this project over the last 10 years or so, the, the beach classic design is, is what was selected to be included in the city's wayfinding and signage master plan. The master plan is intended to, to dictate the, and solidify the, the signs that are being placed in the city and, and create a, a common look for sort of the hodgepodge that's out there now. Most recently, we were at council July 18th, 2023. During that council meeting, there were a couple of decision points to be made, confirming the font, whether we wanted, wanted two-sided signs, illuminated signs, whether or not to include the business directories in downtown and North Manhattan Beach in our Phase One project, which we decided to do and that's moving forward. And during that meeting, it was decided to keep the white or the beach classic theme for the signs. Subsequent to that meeting, council gave us direction to revisit that specifically for the pole-mounted street identify signs. We've got a mock-up here if anybody wants to know exactly what we're talking about. These signs specifically, we, we were asked to bring that back and re, relook at some options for those ones in both the, the blue and the beach classic or white theme. So we came back on March 19th, 2024, had further discussion and further ideas were brought up during that meeting, so, so we've brought them back here. So we're going to be discussing that sign, this, the street identity sign, the blue, blue or white one. But there are four other signs that we're going to run through that are also included in the master plan and the idea is to, to show you that we've taken your comments to heart and this is what we've come up with based on your comments. So if you have further comments, we're happy to have those, but hopefully we've gotten it right. So I will let Cliff take over from here. He'll run through the four different signs that we're going to be discussing tonight and then I'll be back at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, staff and residents. And it's good to be back, great to see everybody again. The four signs we'll be talking about tonight include major identity sign that will be perimeter locations in the city to announce when you enter Manhattan Beach. Overhead street name signs, some of these have been sold already. And that has been lighted on both sides. And then a vehicle direction sign, street sign and a parking sign. Thank you. Now I'm going to start with the city identity pylon. This is a sign that's been studied numerous times. And to also give you a sense of why the beach idea has caught attention over the years, the idea is that it looks like driftwood, it looks like the beach. Some of that, some people wondered what that pattern might look like. This sign up here shows you how that pattern might work to show what the beach feel might, might be. Now we've looked at, now if you're aware of some of the identity signs that are out in the streets today, some are built out of old rocks and different styles have been included over the years, but I think what caught our attention originally was the, the way a lot of these pylons are addressed signs for the city. So the original inspiration was this sign, or signs like it in the city, and we developed a variety of versions of it. Eventually I think the city council at some point took the peak off and we ended up with a flat top. Now, so the current proposed sign looks like this. The background is supposed to look like weathered white wood and one of these signs has been installed. I think that's here. Let me go back. So these are some of the variations and the evolution of this sign type. There are currently proposed, I think, 10 of these and they're at perimeter streets where you enter the city. Other city precedents that you might be familiar with include Marina Del Rey, Temple City, Worcester, Massachusetts, some in other cities, but locally Long Beach, Carson have signs generally of this vertical style. And the ones you're seeing here, this picture, are all about 20 feet tall.
How tall is ours?
The one you have currently installed is, is 20 feet. And I'll address that issue when it comes up.
Question to your honor, the mayor. Are we taking these one by one or?
It's a lot of material. Perhaps we should do that. We'll take each sign type.
If you want, sure, whatever you want.
Well, I mean, you know, then we'll ask, we'll go through the process.
I guess the question is, when do you want to do public input?
Well, it would be after his presentation.
So on all of them?
I can go through the whole thing and come back.
Okay, all right.
Let's do it. I'll try to make that efficient for you.
We'll, we'll ask questions and then have public input.
The current sign as proposed, this version, these little red dots, which I'm sure are hard to see, but essentially they're at the perimeter of the city as you enter the city. The existing sign is proposed at 20 feet. Here's what it looks like in a couple of other locations rendered in at 20 feet. Now you're probably wondering why 20 feet? And I've already heard somebody say, well, that's too tall. Well, look at how high lights are. Look at how high other signs are. Everything in the city is higher than 20 feet. I assure you of that. And here we are with three different proposed heights, 20, 16 and 12. And the way that might look in the city, this is at the same locations, a 20-foot sign, a 16-foot sign and a 12-foot sign. Now I know your first reaction is, wow, 12 feet, looks great. You won't see 12 feet. I would say if you want to make it 12 feet, don't buy the signs. You will start to see it at 16, but if you truly want to see your entries into the city, we recommend 20 feet. And again, look at the surroundings. Everything is much bigger than 20 feet. If we do it too much smaller, it will disappear in the environment. And if you'd like me to go back to other precedent signs, typically around 20 feet is what cities have been doing. Okay, the second sign type we're talking about today are street name signs. This is an example of probably the one people liked the most last time, but we have a lot of variations. And there's still discussion on what color this sign should be. Your current street name signs are here and they're blue and they include a city logo with a wave shape under the sign that matches this sign here as well. So the different. Pardon me? So your existing signs again are blue, maybe a little darker blue than this one, but they also include a symbol up here. That symbol in the past has just been a sun and a wave and the word Manhattan Beach. So what we're proposing is to include your new logo. There are a few variations, but we would probably suggest a full color logo because it's easy to do these days and then put a blue background with the street name and the city on it. So here are a few variations. This one most closely matches your current sign, which is what you're seeing here as the example. There are other options in white and blue. So one of the decisions to be made, hopefully today, would be, do you want it to be white or blue? And then these other ideas show you different variations of shapes. This one again is closest to what you have today. These are all different shapes. I just draw your attention really to the top line where it's a full color logo with text, full color logo without the text, and then a full color logo or a half color, three color logo here. These are other variations on the shape that you might consider. It's probably too much to look at, but you get the idea. And then here it is in white. So it could be blue as you have today or white. And then the third type sign we're looking at today is a parking identity sign. These would be signs that would be at parking lots to help you know where to park and that it's, is made visible from a distance. We've added a number and a place which will help with wayfinding so people not only have a number, but they have a place where they park. Sometimes the people, I remember, well, I parked at number two, but where the heck is number two? So there's always a, a location here, hours of operation as well. The messaging is really set up to be very legible from a vehicle. They'll have a logo on them and these context images give you a feel for their scale. Now, the next sign we're looking at is a vehicle direction sign. One of these is over here as an example. Now, when we do vehicle direction signs, there are regulations. The MUTCD is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. This is a traffic engineering requirement for any signs going a specific speed. In your town, we're going less than 30 miles per hour in some areas, a little over 30 in other areas. In areas of 30 miles per hour, it's required that the height of the cap is four inches. In areas that go up to 40 miles per hour, we need a six inch cap height. So what you're seeing on this sign over here is a four inch cap height. Again, surrounding cities such as Long Beach or other cities have included this as well. So this is actually a little over four, four inch cap height, which resolves the issue for either 30 miles per hour or 35. Other cities as precedents, in case you've floated through these cities recently, Santa Monica uses this basic structure, an outline of sizes, their colors are a little different, and the city of Long Beach. Now originally, we proposed your signs to all be blue. That goes back pretty far, many years. And at the time, the city council didn't want to look like Long Beach, didn't want to look like Santa Monica, didn't want to look like Hermosa and everybody else. They wanted it to be distinctly and uniquely Manhattan Beach, which is how we got to the white background color because they felt it felt more beachy. Now, some people have also said, gee, that feels pretty big. Can you show us what it'll look like if we did them smaller? So this shows you the original proposed sign here, a smaller message sign. Now if we go to smaller signs, we have to start abbreviating words. So instead of North Manhattan Beach, it would be North MB. And the reason for that is again, the, the required cap height by the city engineer, well, by traffic engineers and national standards. Now, if you wanted to make it much smaller, you could cut it in half. Now, if you wanted to make it much smaller, you could cut it in half and go with much smaller signs, but then you would double the number of your signs. So, right now, we're proposing, I think, 26 of these. We could go down to smaller signs and you would end up with 52. We could go yet smaller, you would still end up with 52 signs, but the small size we could recommend would be something like your existing sign, which, by the way, doesn't meet MUTCD code. So, it has to be a little bit bigger than that sign. Okay, so where would these signs go? The city identity signs would be essentially at the perimeter locations. There's been some suggestion, we add one down here. That's perfectly reasonable idea. We had put one here to kind of identify the city at its origin, but we could easily add one down here. Parking identity signs, there are seven of them. They're primarily around the pier area, around this area here. And then vehicle direction signs, estimated quantity is 28, or I said 26. And these are mostly focused around the urban areas and around Highland. There are a few out in the perimeter of the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
So, today, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Today, staff recommends that city council discuss and provide direction on the use, size, shape, color, and locations of these four signs as they are designed in the wayfinding and the signage and wayfinding master plan. And that concludes our presentation. We can flip back to any of the slides that you'd like to facilitate discussion.
Colleagues? For questions? Or comments?
The only question I would have is one that's been posed by the public in the discussion, blue versus white. Some folks have said, we can't see the, the type on the white background. I know Beverly Hills has black and white. I know it's used in other places. Is there, does it not meet the standards, the highway standards, having white with black lettering?
It actually meets the standards. It's one of the better standards. It's the highest contrast we can get, is black and white. The only thing we could do differently would be a black background with white letters, which we wouldn't recommend. But the contrast meets all the requirements.
I, I would note, too, that some of the signs that were installed as prototypes are not illuminated, so I think the illumination definitely helps, especially at nighttime. We do have some of those installed in town already.
Yes.
Hey, Catherine, could you go back to slide five, please? When you're bringing that up, the tree section has, I call the pyramid type, with the post type signs, white.
Obelisk.
Obelisk, yeah, there you go. With the reflective tape on the outside of it.
Yes.
What is the recommendation for interior city streets? I understand commercial, I get all that. What are we telling residents, the tree section, you're going to place? You're going to place the blue sign and a post, is that the recommendation for interior streets?
Is it, I'm just going to point at the board so I make sure that I'm talking about...
Yes. Second, that's it. The obelisk, Steve, what do they call it?
So, the obelisks are intended to stay. They will not be replaced with, with the traditional signs.
Got it. And those obelisks that are missing the actual reflective numbers, we'll go back and replace those. Some reason they're either souvenirs, or wear and tear, they're gone.
I think I took Director Lee's microphone, so he can't answer my question.
I have a different recollection. I have a different recollection of that, by the way.
Our maintenance team is actually in the process of refreshing all the obelisks throughout town, and not only in the tree section, there's some in the sand section. There's a lot of wear and tear on them, and we're moving from a painted background that fades easily to a reflector that's bolted on, that's going to provide more longevity, and it's going to be easier to see for the driving public.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
No, I'll comment later.
Councilmember LeSueur?
So, just to confirm on this subject, the post is as cutoff top, but it could just as easily, if there was consensus, to make something here. It could certainly be an obelisk top, but I'm not sure if we're all going to agree on that.
We can make it whatever you want. One idea, I'm not sure, has ever been talked about, is putting a bird up there. You have some seagulls on some sides. I mean, you could make it a little more whimsical as well.
I'm sorry, the bird's residue, or the bird?
Yeah, just the, and you could put anything up there. So, yes, we could put the obelisk shape back, but I know there was a comment that came through, how we can make these more beachy feelings. And one might just be to put a little sculpture up there as well. So, there are a lot of options.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask a couple of questions here. I kind of remember in that meeting where we talked about, you know, the big question, blue versus white. I didn't think we were so definitive about the white. Is there any way to recall?
It was before your time.
Yeah.
No, do, can I clarify? You mean for the big streets. You're just talking about the big streets.
Yeah, 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 this big street sign on slide four.
That decision was made.
That, we've made that, yeah.
But what was actually said there? I, I didn't think it was that clear. I, I thought it was...
It was a three, two vote.
A what?
Yes. Was it? Did we vote?
Yes.
There, there was a more, sorry, I'm sorry, so sorry to interrupt. There was a more recent discussion related to these ones specifically, and there was a kind of a general like of the blue, but there was no formal direction. So, for the overhead hanging lights on the major streets, those were decided to be white some, some years ago, but it was just these pole-mounted street identifier signs within the neighborhoods that was still up for debate. If that helps clarify.
Okay. All right. Another question is, what are the, what are the cities doing around nearby? I saw Redondo was going blue and...
Yeah, my understanding is Redondo is going blue.
Green to blue, and we don't want to cause confusion. This is supposed to eliminate the confusion.
Most cities seem to choose blue. Now, I'm not sure I can explain why that is, just a color everybody seems to feel comfortable with. White was originally chosen to make you unique and to not blend in with all the other cities. And that, again, was a decision made many years ago.
But the question is, like, is Hermosa sticking with brown? Brown and gold lettering?
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that. I did hear a rumor that they might be changing as well, but I can't confirm that. Right now, it's blue, I'm sorry, it's brown with the yellow writing, I think.
For their street signs.
Their street signs.
For the street signs.
Not the major streets.
Okay, so our big street signs that are hanging above major intersections that have a light box are going to be white background, black lettering.
That's right. Illuminated, yeah. We installed one at Manhattan Beach Boulevard in Peck recently.
Okay, and...
It was really nice.
And with the color logo.
With the color logo, yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're clear. I must have been the number two vote, I guess.
I recall expressing a preference for blue, but I think we lost that major battle on this highly important issue, too.
Well, we're brothers in arms.
Well, and I actually had been in the majority and came back to say, hey, wait, I like the blue street signs. So, I think that's the genesis of this, that discussion.
So, we voted three times, okay.
No, not quite, more than that.
Okay, and now, so here's my questions about the, the city identity pylons. I think that might have been my comment, that, that doesn't remind me of any beach. Doesn't remind me of driftwood. It doesn't really evoke warm, fuzzy feelings about, you know, that we have about Manhattan Beach. It's just a, it's just a big pole.
Is that a question?
Yeah. So, so, where did that design come from in terms of, you know?
I thought we killed that, to be honest.
We did?
I thought we did. I thought we made very clear at the last meeting, we didn't want vertical 20-foot signs. But again, this, this has become fuzzy because it's been going on since 2014.
Right.
And in every iteration, somebody doesn't like something. The evolution of, of this, as I explained, came from the pyramid top of the, of the streets throughout the city. That's where it started. I don't, I know there were suggestions to make it shorter, and that's what the other slide was addressing. But if there's more to it that you'd like to explore, we're happy to do it.
Mayor, can I jump in for a sec?
Sure.
Save it for our comments. So, just to provide a little more clarity, we are, we awarded a contract recently to do phase one of our wayfinding, which is the general signs to get our residents and visitors to our parking structures. Over the last few months, the, the conversation at the council level has been, yes, go do that, but please don't install these big pylons without further direction. Don't install big wind sails on light poles without further direction. And, and there was not unanimity on the, the neighborhood signs of whether we're doing white or blue, and whether we're doing the old logo with our new, I'm sorry, the old mountain with the new logo on it, and you wanted to have a conversation about that as well. And so, we've, we made actually some significant strides over the past couple of years with a, a big leg of this project going, and these are some of the outstanding issues that the council wanted to talk about. The reason that this A1 sign is for discussion is because it's actually in the adopted plan, and we've heard some feedback, don't do that. And so, we want to get a disposition, disposition on that. Are we doing those or no? And if, if we are going to do them, then in the future, we'll plan for that. If not, we're going to focus on other things, certainly with some of these other signs. We want to check in with the council, make sure we're doing what you want us to do.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification. So, to continue with my questions, how about safety on these big poles, these city identity poles? We've had DUIs around here, they're smashing into poles, knocking things over. I mean, how rugged are they?
They're pretty rugged, and certainly as rugged as any street light. And they're built with power, you know, strong foundations. I actually have never seen anybody hit one yet in any town. They tend to hit other things first, but they're pretty, they're pretty substantial.
The police are over there going, no.
And, and then just about the, the top, you know, the questions about the top, whether it's clean cut or the...
Obelisk style.
Obelisk style. I mean, just from a maintenance standpoint, if you have something flat up there, isn't dirt and everything going to accumulate?
We put a slight percentage grade on there, so it drains, and so it drains easily. Birds still might perch up there, but though, we can put pins on top to prevent that as well.
Okay. I don't know, we got some pretty tenacious pigeons around town. Okay. And then, so, I'll, I'll leave it here for now.
Okay.
Give other people opportunity. Anybody else?
No more questions.
Lots of comments.
No more questions?
Lots of comments.
Okay, and let's take it to public comments.
I have a question. Would you give the podium? I'm confident that around Southern California, there are signs that are perfectly legible and crystal clear that are 100 years old. And when you look at them, they look like they're baked porcelain. Some of these guys, he's nodding. And so, I'm looking at this sign, and I'm thinking, I hope that's linear polyurethane aircraft paint, because for, for a beautiful sign like that to hold up for 100 years, I'm thinking, I don't know. So, I'll, I'll give that to you.
Yeah. The current fabrication would be, fabrication would be aluminum coated with actually aircraft or vehicle paint, and they'll last, they'll last at least 25, 30 years. If we did them out of porcelain, which would be fabulous, they will last 100 years. But the expense of doing that is fairly prohibitive these days.
Okay, excuse me, sir, 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 we, we can't have a dialogue here. Okay, we got to get to other public comments.
But they will last.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Speaking on behalf of my wife, who could not make the meeting tonight, Rita Crabtree Compa. Signage, the most important aspect of all signage is to keep it at a minimum while enhancing visibility. For the street signs, option 4C in white with a black outline gives the vibe of our beach with a, with a wave curve. Keeping the block number on the sign is very important. For the city signs at the main entrance areas, I prefer the obelisk shape, which mimics what we have on the ground level of the streets at medium height. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, any other comments? Seeing none online?
There's no request on Sue.
Okay, so we'll close public comments and go on to council discussion. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Okay.
Your honor, is this where we're going one by one, though? Vote on them individually?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. That way, we don't have to go...
Okay, where do you want to start?
So, start at the beginning.
What is the first, the first one is the overhead white signs?
No, the vertical monument sign.
Oh, Lord, you mean the, as you, sorry.
Vertical monument sign.
Vertical monument sign, all right.
Yes. A01.
Gosh, I didn't really want to talk about that one.
I can talk about it. I'm happy to.
The ugly step, sorry, go ahead. I look forward to your comments, Councilwoman Calton.
As I said earlier, things have gotten fuzzy over the years because we've gone through this and different councils have, and it seems to change every time, lack of consensus. And I was on council when we came with this idea for the beach. I can't say I'm happy with execution, though. I'm sorry. But, you know, it doesn't look like driftwood or anything like that. It looks to me like oxidation, not a, not a pattern, not anything, not a design. And so, I can't say I'm especially happy with that. That's the background. As far as the monument sign itself goes, I've seen the one up at Rosecrans in Sepulveda. I think it's horrible. It's too tall, too imposing, it's not welcoming. I really, as a monument sign for the city, feel that we should just take the logo, because it's redundant to say Manhattan Beach and have the logo that says Manhattan Beach since 1912. Take the logo, four by four, five by five, especially there at Rosecrans, Sepulveda. There's one in the median already. Doesn't have to be on the corner. It was done well on the corner at Artesia and Aviation, and that was horizontal. When we have the ability, when the Frye's property gets redone, we have the ability to do that then as well. In the meantime, there are other places where we have the point stone entry signs, the pseudo-rock things that could be replaced. Throw the city logo, beautiful logo, got the pier, got the ocean, has the sunset sky, Manhattan Beach in it. Make that large enough to replace the ones that we have out there now and leave it at that. Last thing I want to see is 20-foot-high Manhattan Beach signs at every entrance to town. Thank you, Your Honor.
So, now, now I'll comment. I support that.
Mayor Proton?
I, I, so I think David and I and Steve and Richard, we're all on the council in 2014, started talking about, yes.
Not me.
In spirit.
In spirit, well, maybe you just were commenting to us, but, yeah, I don't, I, I think back then, we said, oh, let's not even talk about these verticals right now. We just didn't, I just didn't like them, and we didn't, nobody could understand them. So, thank you, but I, I'm fine, I like what you're suggesting, Steve. If we were going to do vertical, I'd want to be like an obelisk, so it would at least refer back, but they're not, they're not welcoming. They're going to be missed. So, I, I like your idea, but I think if there's consensus that we don't like the vertical ones, I think we move on to the next ones, but unless you guys want to try to, because they're still going to have to come back then and show us what that would look like. So, that's what I would suggest.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Actually, do we still have the picture of the Artesia Aviation sign anywhere? You can pull that up. Those who are driven by Artesia Aviation, you've seen it. It's set back in there in that corner. If you look at it, it's fantastic, clean, no doubt what it is, and it's out up in the air.
Northwest corner. Northwest corner.
Northwest corner. Fantastic. I wish you'd do all of that throughout the city entranceway. And there's no one doesn't look at it and go, that's pretty cool, what you guys did there. I didn't know directly had a copy of my phone, I'm sorry. A picture of that anywhere? You can load in there.
Looking for it.
While you're looking, while you're looking, the reason why this is so unusual is that we talked about this for 10 years, folks, and we know, different councils come in, they want pink signs or white signs or blue signs. Whatever the color may be, we finally decided to get to the white commercial signage. That's one step. Now, the next step, the streets, we talked about tree section, or the hill section, or the east side. You want to tell them what's consistently across the board. You want to keep the traditional obelisk signs in the tree section? Great, make them all happy. As long as they've got the reflective bolted seal, no one will take one that was a souvenir, that's perfect. The east side doesn't care so much. They don't have obelisks over there. They'll be happy with a street sign on the east side of Manhattan Beach. But whatever we're going to do, it needs to be consistent, whatever we're going to do it, and then get it started. 10 years to get something done. This isn't Washington or Sacramento, it's Manhattan Beach. So it should take us 10 years to get the final decision on what you want to do and start it. And then, just the council behind us will have to do it all over again. So let's get it moving, whatever we're going to decide tonight, get it done and get out of the way. That's it, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
I think ultimately, we're going to give direction on where there's agreement and where there might be disagreement, we might defer that to a future date. My own thought is, I'm not a fan of the scale of the vertical pole. I think it goes so far away from what was in, when I lived in the tree section, something that really was comforting in part of our neighborhood, which were the small-scale obelisks, to say it in the plural. I would be in favor of something far smaller than the largest one, but then, as the speaker has indicated or our consultant, then you kind of lose the purpose of it serving as signage, marking signage of entry to the city. I like Councilmember Napolitano's idea, set by Mayor Tim Howard, where we take advantage of this wonderful logo. I think, do we know people that worked on that logo? I think two council members in conjunction with our graphic designer of the city and then an outside resident, I think, helped come up with this logo. It really was a community-based logo, and it reflects this beautiful color of our community. I support it. Where I might agree to disagree is, I sort of like the Flintstone-style entry marker. And I recognize there'll be disagreement on that, but I do think it's distinctive, and I still sort of like it. But as for the vertical marker, I would agree with the growing consensus is that the large-scale monument is perhaps not where we're going to want to be going.
Yes, and sort of wrap it up. I think we're in agreement to reevaluate and come back. And then just for the record, I had stated before, pardon me during my questions, but it just, it just doesn't feel warm at all. I've just even started to even question the need for all these. I mean, we all know where we are in our cars and on our phones. I mean, if you need a sign like that to figure out, oh, I'm in Manhattan Beach, you know, maybe we should send you back and get reevaluated for your license. So, well, I mean, it just, people know where they are. And we're talking about, you know, 15 or so signs. And then, El Porto was left out, you know, up at 45th Street, which is where Manhattan Beach begins. So I'm glad that was rectified. But I guess that we have consensus on reevaluating?
Yeah.
Yes.
This one?
Yep.
Enough direction?
I don't, no. I, Your Honor, I think reevaluation shouldn't be the direction. Direction is something other than a 20-foot monument vertical sign, which, you know, it reads as one word up and down, like the line of a I chart. So we don't want a vertical monument sign. Emphasize the logo if we're going to be having these things as entry signs. I think that's clear direction for them, because otherwise, we're just going to, next council will see it, oh, a vertical monument sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All good?
Yeah, that's consistent. So I have comments on the next one.
Well, I would imagine, all right, so why don't you lead off?
Thank you. The street identity overhead, is that where we all are?
Yes.
Yay. I like, I like them as proposed. I like the white with the black with the logo illuminated, double-sided. I was in New York City recently and...
Which one? Oh, are you on A04? That's not the, the street signs or are you talking about...
Street identity overhead, I thought.
Oh, that wasn't the next one, sorry.
Oh, I'm going, sign types under review, it was page 219, I'm sorry.
219.
It's all... Yeah.
Is that addressed again?
Well, I thought these were the ones under review, so that's why I was, is that...
Okay, A03, right?
Yeah, sorry, and I also don't have my glasses, so I can't see the numbers. But I can read this sign. So, and what was funny is I was in New York City recently and happened to talk to some people in the lobby, and I said, oh, you're from Manhattan Beach? Oh, you have those great signs with the black letters on the white? I'm like, you're kidding me, right? But, so, and so she was talking about Marine Avenue. Her friend lives on Marine Avenue, she loves the sign. So that's why I'm supporting this. No, I just think those are great. So I would say, yes, let's, we're done on that. That's what, that would be me.
Okay.
I'll make it a second, Your Honor.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know they were up for review, because it's, there's not a separate section further in there.
Oh, see, I was on 218. So what page should I be on?
No, 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 there isn't. I mean, this is it.
This is the only one that... No, I understand that, yeah.
So that's A03.
I have one question for the Public Works Director, if I could. Sorry, multitasking. It does appear that the black of the lettering is fading on one of the signs, and I'm wondering if that was just a mock-up perhaps? Correct.
Correct, that's a mock-up, just to demonstrate what it could look like.
Before it starts fading, right.
Well, and before we do a full rollout with the type of materials that have been suggested already.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to that question, Your Honor, we did have an issue at one point as to, I think, the type itself, whether it's too spread out horizontal or too... Wasn't, we weren't able to fit some of the street names in there that we'd have to abbreviate, or we wouldn't be able to add on the block numbers, is that correct?
Yeah, so a few council meetings ago, a few times ago that we talked about this, one of the questions was to move away from the Spartan MB font to something that is more condensed, especially for longer street names. And the direction from the council was to keep the Spartan MB font on the surface.
Need to be revisited, then.
Well, that's the first bullet here on page three.
Consequences of that is for the longer signs, we need to start abbreviating some of the words.
Do we know the fonts that we currently have on the street signs? On the residential street signs? Because it has a bit of a serif on it. I don't know if our designer knows. I don't know the existing one.
I don't remember that we agreed to keep Spartan. I mean, I like it.
We talked about the difficulty, I don't recall what the final outcome was.
I remember that, too.
See?
There was concern, or if I said fuzzy, but there was concern about not being able to fit the information that folks wanted to fit on there.
We can, I'm certain, we could study the long names and come up with a solution for them specifically, which might be tightening up the letter spacing or just modifying the font slightly. But in terms of consistency, I would recommend you keep the Spartan everywhere. Because probably only a few instances where we would have to adjust it.
Anymore? So actually, I have a question. I find that the block numbers are really, really helpful.
Yep.
Are they going to be put on those signs, the A03 signs? We don't see it in the example. No, no, the A03.
No, they're not on those, right?
I mean, that's where I find it, yeah, well, that's where I find it the most helpful.
Page 219.
Is at the major intersections.
219.
That's where I am. Yeah, he's talking about the overhead.
Yeah, right there.
Whoa. He is.
It is there?
We don't have that now, do we?
I just remember that, but on Sepulveda, there is a north and a south. Sepulveda and Manhattan Beach, there's a north and a south. That starts, what, at First Street, right, Second Street?
I think it's inconsistent throughout the city. I think that's one of the, that was one of the impetus behind the whole program to begin with, is to get it consistent. As proposed, as we've been implementing these major arterial signs at the intersections, they don't have the block numbers on them. For the neighborhood signs, the police department has made it clear that that's very helpful to have the block numbers on the neighborhood signs.
Sure, yeah.
I think the mayor is correct about something. And I thought we distinguished between the overhead hanging signs, and there's a name for it, that you've used several times, I'm making sure I'm correct.
Street identity overhead.
But the one, the larger-scale one that we just agreed should be white and black versus the street signs of the residential streets, which would definitely have the block number on it. Did we not reach that direction in our last meeting? Because I'm also a little bit confused as to what we agreed on and issues that we left open.
I think there was strong interest in having that conversation and for the reasons that have been discussed. And so I think we're looking for that direction tonight.
Because I'm thinking, to the extent there's a council majority that wants to go with the black and the white, I myself prefer the blue, but this is going on too long. We have other issues on our agenda tonight, is we had distinguished between the white for the larger signs and then the blue for the residential signs.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that...
Yes. I think the issue is block numbers.
Block numbers. And the mayor is asking, well, what about block numbers on the overhead?
Which I think would work.
So any more comments here?
On the overhead?
Yeah, on the block numbers on the overhead, because I want to ask public safety.
I think we'd have to see mock-ups, I mean, how does it fit on there?
I don't think it, well...
Well, will they fit on it?
Well, it'll be tight.
What font would it drop down to, zero or two?
In other cities, we haven't added the block numbers on the overheads, only on the street signs.
We have our GPS, Joe, we'll be fine.
Okay, yeah, I agree, but I'm asking public safety. They're the ones speeding down the street, you know, going to calls, and I know...
We're going to keep them on the street signs. Okay.
These are at major intersections, you're going...
I think if we're, you know, the block numbers are helpful, especially in the neighborhoods, that's always good. Where they come most helpful on the larger overhead street signs is when we're actually having mutual aid response or other cities come in, rather than have to say you're east or west of Sepulveda or north or south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, if they can just look at the block numbers, it's helpful. But like you were saying, too, we'll make it work however, however you decide.
So like, it would be, just to clarify.
No, I more than understand.
I know, I'm clarifying, you're talking about something like that. That would be, okay, that's, I was just asking.
Just right there, right under where it says Boulevard.
Let's get examples back, Your Honor, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, if we can just get examples back, real life, just like you have behind you.
Good idea, yeah.
Right, just so we can kind of maybe put one up on the street, and we can all drive by at 45 miles an hour.
Exactly.
You know?
Not me, I'm following the speed limit.
Maybe I'm just old school, I don't know, but I don't want to be looking, we don't want distracted drivers, you know, trying to figure out if they're north or south and what block they're at when they're on their major arterial streets. So, thank you for that suggestion. Okay, we can move on, and thank you, Captain.
Your Honor, as it relates to comments that Councilmember Montgomery had about Artesia and Aviation, we actually have an image that we can pull up on the screen to show the council if you wanted to revisit that yet again tonight.
Mr. Mayor, show everybody we're talking, see that?
Oh, that's so nice.
Clean, notice, no numbers on it, but you can see how clean that is.
Oh, so it's on the chase wall?
It's on the chase bank retaining wall.
Pretty good, Richard.
No discussion?
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yeah.
Didn't take us 10 years to get that baby either.
Yeah?
Yep.
Because it was on private property. Oh, yeah, I guess so, yeah. Okay, so now the street signs, I think we, thank you for that. Now, the A04 street signs? Blue, we've decided on blue. Any other, so...
We're going with four A, full color logo.
Yeah, like, so four A with, without text, though.
Without text.
Yeah, logo without text.
Full color logo without text. Yeah, we have to have text on this, yeah.
Okay, and you don't want the little bump up? The bump up, like we're showing there, is only the logo.
To me, that just shrinks the logo that much more.
Just take it from the existing signs.
Yep.
It's hard for people at home to see that, maybe?
Sure.
But that little shape, this existing shape, you don't need it.
So one option would be to replace what we currently have with just the full logo to the left, if we were to keep the shoe design, even though I understand that it would be redundant if we did the full logo, which has Manhattan Beach. But we could just do the visual of the logo without Manhattan Beach and then have the wording Manhattan Beach to the right is in that mock-up that you're holding, right?
Could you bring, could you come to the front? Because I feel like it's not, nobody but us can see that. I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yes, oh, of course.
I can't see that far anymore.
I can't, I actually can't see that.
Could be conservative weapons, right?
So, for all the viewers at home, Kate's going to be like a school librarian.
It's all white.
So this shape is slightly different than the shapes on the screen, yep.
Can we get the full camera on this, please, instead of on the slideshow? Is there a chance to get the full screen camera?
I guess my issue with it is, the new iteration is gray. And again, it's a shape that doesn't necessarily lend itself to anything.
The shoe, the current.
The shoe.
So the thing that we're holding here, or that we, that Kate, the engineer daughter is holding...
Okay, now you can switch it around.
Is what we have now.
It doesn't follow the curve of the circle.
And so we're discussing, I just, it's very confusing. I just wanted like, to keep that versus what we have, look at that. And so Councilmember Lesser said, well, we could have the logo and it could say Manhattan Beach next to it. That was an idea he had. The ideas in our slide deck are just like a round bump up, so without the shoe.
Sorry.
Okay, enough, enough translating for the members at home. I'm concerned about public engagement. I'm, I care about blue, I care about four color and no words on the logo.
Get rid of the shoe.
I'm agnostic. Okay, logo, I like that. Get rid of the shoe? Yes, love.
The shoe doesn't add anything.
No, I don't even, it's...
So the shoe is a mock-up of a wave?
Sand, sand and sea.
It's gray, we have gray sand.
So you go with just the bump?
We could do alternative waves.
I like that, no, no. I like that, logo, no text, then Manhattan Beach, right? That you said?
I'm with full color, A4, or this without the shoe.
That without the shoe, I like.
Make a motion.
Richard, do you have a comment?
Made a motion.
I'm checking that, make a motion, make your, state your motion.
Yeah.
That.
Here you go, microphone.
Thank you all for your patience. I like this blue sign with the four-color logo, no shoe, and the words Manhattan Beach to the right of it.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
You said I like.
I like. I make a motion that that's the sign we should do.
I'll make a second for that.
I never want to talk about this again, but I'm so grateful to get the blue signs. I really wanted them.
I just wanted to clarify, because we had gone back and forth in terms of the block number that will still be on there.
Hundred percent.
Same sign the way this other shoe.
Yep.
Just enlarge the logo.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're...
Yep.
Okay with that?
Love it, thank you.
Okay, so did we have, we have a motion?
At a second.
As we described.
Thank you.
At a second, and can we have a vote, please?
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes, finally.
Mayor Protem Howard?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Okay.
Motion passes 5-0.
And I'll take care of all those people who say, I got lost in Manhattan Beach. Okay, so now, is there one more?
Vehicle direction.
Oh, the parking. So the B01, vehicle direction.
I think we also have A05 to confirm.
Oh, A05, parking freestanding, thank you. Parking identity freestanding on page 229.
I make a motion.
Yeah, and I second it.
Is there an option there?
Comments?
So just to confirm, we've gone back and forth on blue or just white? For these, we just would go white because that's consistent with the larger overhead signs, correct?
I, I'm agnostic, but I'm supporting what is presented on the page. I think it's clean.
Well, I would go with it without the, whatever that's supposed to be, gray driftwood look.
Oh.
To be clear, which sign are we talking about? There's AO five on the screen right now.
AO five.
But AO five on the screen is white, and that's drifty.
I can't tell, because it's so small on the page.
Oh, I don't like, no, that looks dirty.
Well, maybe we should look at a different pattern, because if it's pure white, you might think it looks like a hospital.
Like a what?
The microphone can get closer.
I would recommend if, that we continue to look at that pattern, so it does look like a piece of wood, otherwise, I think it's gonna look-
I've looked at it long enough.
You ready for having just been white?
Do something, yeah?
I mean, who didn't want to do blue, I don't remember, I'm not, no blame, but-
I'm fine with white. Your Honor, here's a question for the-
The white will be more visible on the landscape.
White's more visible than blue, correct?
Yes, yes.
White it is.
Maybe we need mockups of this. This is something, come back.
There's a lot of writing on it, I can't tell what it is on this.
It's hours of operation.
I mean, okay, Councilmember Lesser, you're saying we bring it back, I mean, because, and what we would be bringing back would be pure white? Because the consultant, or, you know, is saying that would look too much like a hospital.
I was going to support you on your initial motion, I like it, I thought it was white, but now that I study the mockup, that it's gray, and it has a pattern? And we're hearing from the consultant that's urging us not to go with white.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that's fair.
nearest hospital is ten miles away, I'm not really worried about a hospital. Just to confirm, you were saying that white is the best choice?
Well, white is the most visible in the landscape.
I still want to do it. But do we need a mockup, do you guys want a mockup before we make a decision?
We have a blue outline, white interior. I mean, to me, this report, everything is so small on this one sign, the other ones, we have all these options. This, there's one option, this is what it looks like, and it's all in the distance, so, to me, it's hard to say this is great or not.
Do you want to make the same recommendation, then, for, to come back with this one, which is A O five? And then also BO one, which looks like it is also printed on that kind of driftwood-ish kind of background? And I would like to see it mocked up as white, to see if it looks, you know, friendly enough and accessible enough. I feel like it's very easy to read, but if we get it mocked up as white, would that satisfy us all here? Okay, let's do that, then.
It's always better to see it in real-
No, that's fair.
Mayor Protem, do you want to, as long as we're doing mockups, do we want to get blue as well as white, or just come back with white?
I, I'm agnostic, my favorite word tonight.
I favor the white, because I think it would be more visible.
Okay, I'm good with that.
That's fine.
Okay, so is that clear, direction?
So you want to see a mockup?
Clear as mud. George, is that, good, okay, all right.
So we made a decision on the street, the neighborhood signs, we made a decision on the overhead signs.
Now it's vehicle direction.
Oh, right, we have one more. That's the same thing, no, that's also, doesn't that also have the weird-
I thought we just said we're coming back with mockups.
Yeah, I said we're coming back with that one.
Yeah, we're coming back with the parking-
Okay, so which mockup, though, do you want, mockup for the proposed panel, abbreviated messages, smaller panels, or existing directions?
One or two.
I think that's the question, what you want to see the mockup of.
Okay, the mockup on white.
Page two thirty-three.
What do you guys think, full language or abbreviated, a small, slightly small, I think slightly smaller, maybe?
I'm fine with abbreviated.
Yeah, the six by three by three with North MB instead of North Manhattan Beach.
I think we should reduce signage where we can.
You have a different?
Can I just ask the consultant, what are we looking at in the corner of the room, the mockup?
That one over there.
The largest one on the bed.
Second choice you're talking about here.
Yeah.
Is there any way to pull that off where it's from, and just sort of hold it up?
Sure.
So we can see the full, the full sign plan?
This is this one.
Is that the actual veneer material that's used?
I guess my question with seeing that is, there's so much empty space there, like the P for parking is so small compared to the size of the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, well, we can adjust certain sizes, we're trying to maintain a four inch cap height here, anything else can get bigger or smaller.
Because the P's the important part.
And it's, it's set at this spacing, just so it's very legible between thirty and forty miles per hour.
Okay, can I just see the bottom, so what's on the bottom of it? Okay, North Manhattan- Okay, are we, is that El Porto, or is that North Manhattan Beach?
It's on our pier. North Manhattan Beach.
Oh, that's here, because North Manhattan Beach is still right.
To the pier, right.
Okay, no, I just mean the verbiage, do we want to-
Yeah, all the messages will be checked by everybody.
North Manhattan Beach, North of Third Street, or?
They have branded themselves North Manhattan Beach.
North Manhattan Beach?
You can say El Porto for North of Rosecrand.
Just don't call them late for dinner.
Okay, so does that satisfy for the large mockup?
That was for the second one, the abbreviated, yeah.
Yeah, I would, the second one is six feet instead of seven feet. So I personally, that's the one I was thinking about, I think it's still big enough. I, but I do, I would make the P slight, bigger, because I think that's the thing that we're trying to drive people towards.
I agree.
So, that's a mockup I want to see.
Okay, right, six feet.
With bigger P.
Of the five choices you gave us, number two choice. Of the five choices you gave us on page two three three?
Yep.
It's a second choice. Second from the left.
Anything else?
If I, if I could just comment on that, the larger signs, there is some concern whether or not our existing poles can hold that large of a sign. So, so if we were to go with the smaller sized signs, there would be less of that concern, but the six foot sign, we may still have that issue? And need to result in either replacing poles or doing a structural analysis on our poles.
Not interested in paying to replace poles for signs.
In that case, I would recommend the smaller size.
In which case, do we want mockups of the three foot ones that would not require replacement of signs, should we ask for that?
Honestly, I don't need a mockup of that one.
Yeah, let's do that, because I, I thought we had to have them this big, I think they're too big, so, yeah, let's do the three, the three ones. Yep.
Thank you.
You've already got this one.
Yeah.
And while we get those, I recommend we get together outside, and look at them, because that'll really help you understand. By getting, by looking at them outdoors, you'll really understand the impact on a car and what it's like to drive.
Okay. I think we're, we're finished with that short one. So we're gonna recess until ten minutes after eight. Eight, ten.
All set, okay. Here we go. Item number nine, Discussion of Waste Management's Request for an Extraordinary Rate Increase for Modifications to Diversion Requirements. So, Public Works Director Lee?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. Tonight, we have this item to discuss with you. This is requested by the Council at your August 6 meeting. And a quick recap, in March of 2024, WM requested an extraordinary rate increase and modification to their diversion provisions of their contract. The rationale for the rate increase was to offset significant increases in labor costs. And WM also requested new fees, commercial organic waste collection fee and a commercial rollout service fee. And then as it relates to diversion, WM continues to struggle meeting our diversion requirement at 50%. And so these are all items that they requested relief from the city on. On June 26, the city responded denying the extraordinary rate increase and denying the implementation of new rates. And the rationale behind that is our franchise agreement, which was enacted in 2020, specifically prohibits such increases based on changes in wage rates and benefits. And as a path to get the city to be able to consider this request, staff suggested that WM pose an amendment to the contract to actually allow for this type of basis for an increase to be considered. And then the two new rates that they proposed are also specifically prohibited under our franchise agreement. As it relates to the diversion requirements, the provisions of the franchise agreement require us to meet and confer. And our first meeting to meet and confer over these diversion issues is scheduled for August 27th, next week. And then on July 15, WM sent a letter to the city with a copy to the council responding to our June 26 letter. Essentially, they respectfully disagreed with the need for a contract amendment and believes that the city has the ability to consider this extraordinary rate increase now. And they're seeking immediately from the city council. And they're also proposing solutions to ongoing diversion challenges. Furthermore, if the issues cannot be resolved, WM is requesting that the contract be rebid for solid waste services in 2027, rather than the city enacting its optional three contract years. So, we have a seven-year agreement with three additional optional years at the city's discretion to enact, and so they would want us to rebid after the seven base years are concluded. An important note for the council to understand is that, under the agreement, WM is entitled to request annual rate increases in accordance with the Trash and Garbage Collection CPI, which is a national statistic. And they've done that every year under this contract, and the city has approved that every year under this contract. And those increases have totaled over 24% since inception. And Waste Management is present with us this evening, and Kim Ort, their public sector territory manager, will be giving a five-minute brief presentation to the council outlining their request, and then we're ready for any questions and comments that you may have.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Kim Ort, and I am the area manager here with my other local WM colleagues. Sorry, I do not have my glasses, so. Yes. Thank you, that's much better. So.
You're in Manhattan Beach.
I am in Manhattan Beach. I see the blocks numbers, so. So, let's go back, let's rewind, let's start over, sorry.
No problem, sorry.
I'm area manager here with my, with others from my, from local WM that serves this amazing city. We want to thank staff for their hard work and dedication and providing us the opportunity to explain our request for an extraordinary adjustment. And of course, thank you, council, for your consideration tonight. Wow, four decades of partnership. On behalf of WM, I want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this amazing community. It's truly been an honor just to serve you. Together, we have invested in the community and in our schools. Many of our recycling programs offered in Southern California started right here in Manhattan Beach. You guys have been the trend centers. We share your enthusiasm for sustainability and the commitment to the community. Now, as a reminder, our most recent agreement started in 2020 after an RFP process conducted by a third party in 2017. WM was awarded, based on unmatched experience, and oh, and we have saved the city, it was a $10 million savings that was passed on to the residents as well as the businesses. Since then, as we all know, a lot has changed. These uncommon market changes have impacted nearly every aspect of our business, which we have absorbed. We're here tonight to talk about the shift in the labor market and the direct impact to the cost of the businesses we provide in Manhattan Beach. This is not just a waste industry issue, and certainly not unique to WM. Every major industry and employer is experiencing a significant increase in their wages. I'm sure you've recently heard about Disney and their employees wanting a major wage increase. The Hollywood strike impacting our famous and lovely favorite TV shows. The doubling of minimum wage since 2017. And I know that you've seen this here, right here in the city, and I'm not going to provide any data on that, since there's some in this room, but you guys have definitely seen the wage increases. In this region, WM has experienced a 25% increase in driver wages. We've already incurred over half a million dollars in labor expenses, and we're not seeking retro, a retro adjustment, we're just asking to be made whole moving forward. So, what are we asking for tonight, and how does it equate? This equates to $7.50 per home per year. That's 63 cents per month. Let's put that in comparison. Today, I was at Starbucks in Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Highland, and I spent $6.25 on Avente Carmomate Latte. Makiato, sorry, it was not fat, by the way. And that doesn't even include, that doesn't even include the tip. We feel that our request is reasonable and customary for the industry, and it is addressed in our agreement. And Section 5.5 allows for consideration of your request. And let me kind of read the words. "City shall review company's request and, in its city's sole judgment and absolute direction, discretion, sorry, make final determination as to whether an adjustment to maximum rates will be made." We respectfully request your consideration for this very important adjustment to allow us to maintain the high level of service, safety, and community partnership we have built together over many, many decades. We thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to present, and I have a whole team here that's ready and here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Yeah, I have. I have a question. Oh, I think I pressed it, can y'all hear me? I'm not sure who it is addressed to. With regards to residential food waste, is that proposed that, because right now there's no charge for that, but there will be a charge for that going forward?
No, our, our.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Our request is just an increase of 63 cents per month.
Okay. All right.
And, and just to be clear, we don't want to talk about the diversion right now, that, that will be another discussion at a later, at a later date.
Thank you for that clarification, that was going to be another question. Thank you, Sandra, that's all I have.
No, thank you.
Okay. Your Honor? Yes.
So, to city staff, and maybe in particular to the city attorney or to our Director of Public Works, why the discrepancy in the interpretation of the contract as far as whether or not it is expressly prohibited or allowed?
So, the, the contract reads, "No adjustments may be made for inaccurate estimates by company of its proposed cost of operations, unionization of company workforce, change in wage rates or employee benefits, or the implementation or discontinuation of mandatory recycle requirements." And then it goes on to describe how rate increases would be evaluated. And in that same section, then it talks about the sole and absolute discretion on the city.
Right, and so my question to WM would be then, it started out as a request for a labor to, to address the increase of labor costs and other costs as well, and now you're just saying you want a increase? Are you not tying it to anything, you just want an increase?
No, no, no.
And that's how it comes in under the contract language currently? Because if, if it expressly prohibits increases because of labor costs, then you're not asking for increase based on labor cost, or just an increase in general?
Yeah, go ahead. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sandra Persley, I'm the area director of public sector services for WM. I oversee all of our municipal agreements in Southern California. In terms of, we are seeking an adjustment of 63 cents per home per month for standard residential services. We did provide the labor wage increases justification. Truly since the start of the agreement, many of our cost factors have increased exponentially. Labor was the easiest to show on paper and to demonstrate, but we are seeking a 63 cent increase, whether you want to tie that to labor or separately.
I get it, 63 cents, I know you want to repeat that, I get it, 63, but, okay, so it's in general?
In general, we would like, we, we need an increase of the amount already stated multiple times.
And, and what, or how many requests, similar requests have you made to other cities that you work with?
First, I want to be clear that while the regular rate adjustment formula, there's an annual adjustment that's customary for all franchise agreements, whether they're with WM or any provider, there's an annual escalation process based off of CPI. So, we have had that adjustment on an annual basis. We have not made any extraordinary increase adjustments since the start of this agreement. We have made labor requests, this is really, we've made extraordinary increase requests in many jurisdictions during my nearly 20 years with the company.
What I'm talking about, because of these factors that you're saying are happening in Manhattan Beach or affect our collection, at least your contract, right?
We have in the.
Our contract, so what other jurisdictions are you going and asking them for an increase in right now?
The city of Santee approved an adjustment in January, the city of Mission Viejo just recently approved a very similar adjustment. We requested the same adjustment in the city of Rolling Hills Estates. It's really based on the timing of our CBA agreements with the union, and we saw these increases specific to Manhattan Beach in October of 2022. We have been negotiating, not all of our CBA agreements expire at the same time, so I anticipate more requests, probably nine additional requests in future years, depending on the labor impact. It also is related to how recently the agreement was renewed. So, in some cases, you'll see an RFP or an amendment to accommodate for SB 1383. Manhattan Beach has always been very forward-thinking, so you addressed a lot of the changes in law early on, and you haven't required an amendment to your agreement where we would have had that discussion about labor at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
I need to follow up, because I have the same question, and I don't think you fully answered it, due respect. And that is, the Section 5.5 directly states, as our Public Works Director indicated, that no adjustments may be made for wage rates, change in wage rates or employee benefits. So, how can you justify this as an extraordinary basis for a rate increase?
Well, it does say that, our interpretation looking at, and I'm just going to read it, is that the city shall review company's requests, and in the city, that's you, in your sole judgment and absolute discretion, may make final determination as to whether an adjustment to maximum rates may be made. We have made adjustments with this type of language. The consultant was HF&amp;H, that was the third party. We have had adjustments in jurisdictions with the same language, because really it's at the council's discretion on what they deem appropriate or what they'd like to consider. So, that language from the consultant is a guideline, sure, but you still, in our opinion, have the discretion to consider and review the, the request.
And in WM's opinion, how does this tie into a Proposition 218 process, which we had in adopting this agreement, and recognize it's for a five-year term, and now five years has elapsed, but can you explain the rationale of how we even look at this in terms of Prop. 218?
That would be a question for your city council, city attorney. Council, not spelled C-I-L. S-E-L.
Any questions?
So, I have a question. What's the total impact for our residents? 63 cents? I mean, how many residents do you, do you show in Manhattan Beach? Is it close to 13,000?
Was based on the parcel?
Yeah, I think, and, and I apologize, we don't have that exact number, but last time, it is approximately about 13,000, correct.
Okay, so I just did the math, and that's, that's 63 cents per month, per home, that's $8,500 a month, times 12, so that would be $102,000 a year. Does that sound about right?
The entire increase, because there's a commercial impact as well, it's closer to 261,000.
260?
261.
261.
So, what's the impact on the commercial, though? If it's 750, 63 per cent, 63 cents per month, does that apply to the commercial as well?
The commercial was, the impact on a monthly was $11.88, I think.
So, that's the additional cost?
On the most common size, as a percentage, it's 5.4%.
So, it looks like it's about 140,000 that's impacting the commercial.
That sounds right.
Can I tag on to that, Your Honor? So, what notice or heads up have we given to the chamber, to the Downtown Business Association, and North End Business? Do they, how aware are they that this is a possibility? So, yeah.
I can answer that. We've done no outreach on this, the request at the staff level seemed to not meet the criteria of the contract, and we denied it. And Waste Management has essentially appealed directly to the council on And Waste Management has essentially appealed directly to the council on this, and that is why we're here tonight.
Okay. Your Honor, a question to make clarification.
Counselor, member.
If, if the council moves this tonight and approves this, when would it take effect? Now, we have plenty of time and notice everywhere in the world, but when would it take effect?
We would really look for your guidance on that, hopefully sooner rather than later. But, I mean, we were willing to work with, with Public Works and, and make sure that, that residents and the commercial establishments gets plenty of notice before moving forward.
As Counselor Member Lesser mentioned, this is a fee that the council would enact that's subject to the Proposition 218 process. And so the, the last process that was undertaken was for the first five years of the contract. And this extraordinary increase was not considered as part of that. And so if the council was sympathetic to this request and wanted to enact it, you could enact it pending the, essentially it's a majority protest process. And the, all the ratepayers in the city would have the opportunity to protest the rates. And so we would have to do that before the new fee could go into effect. And so it's something if you wanted to do, we could come back with a timeline on how long that would take us to do on an expedited basis. But as I mentioned, we are, the, the first five years were already completed by the council. We are aiming, I think, February or March to come back to you for the next five years. And so this is something that if you wanted us to, to do it that time, we could. I don't think that necessarily meets Waste Management's immediate request, but that would be the next logical time we were looking to do something like this.
Got it. Thank you. Your Honor.
Yes.
Yes. My point is, you know, if our business community has heard all along, hey, it's been rejected at staff level, not going forward. This sudden shift, I really would like to see outreach to our business community. Because that's eleven eighty-eight, right? Sixty-three cent per month for residential per home. Great. Eleven eighty-eight. We've got a bunch of impacted businesses as well dealing with the same issues that you are. And so, you know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this. We've had a great partnership. I look forward to continuing that partnership. But I do think, in fairness, the business community deserves further outreach. So you can explain to them, the same way you're explaining to us, what it would mean to them so that each of them can calculate their own bottom line and provide input to us if they want to. And if they don't, you know, great. But, you know, we're in second meeting in August, vacations, all that. I know there's all sorts of excuses, but I think we should make a genuine effort to reach out to the business community, let people know what it's, how it's going to impact them, and then bring it back here for further discussion. Just a follow-up question, Your Honor. So to that point, they wouldn't do that yet if the council wasn't going to support it. So I see where you're going, but why would I notify the business and the city if we're going to stop it? We're not even considering it. Why would I even notify them yet? To my mind, my mind, first step, counseling to say, hey, you want to do this? Now it's a matter of timing for 218 votes to go forward. Notify everyone, the city residents, and businesses, hey, council supports this idea. This is what it would cost you per month, per year. Business, residential, do you support it? There's your vote and notification. Why wouldn't notify me? It's not going to happen. I don't want to notify something that may not happen. Because, well, because it's under consideration, just like everything else that comes to us. And the problem with the protest vote is that they're outweighed by the homeowners who get, are only looking at sixty-three percent. And from experience, just tell you, we're not going to receive enough protests. So, you know, it's, so the die is already cast in that way. I think it would be disingenuous to say, we've agreed to this, this was going to happen, and you can protest if you want, but it's still going to happen because we already passed it. In this case, further outreach, I think, is warranted.
So, so I have another question. So the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in additional revenue, what percentage of that is the total that you collect, that you charge or receive from the city, both residence and commercial?
If we were to apply two hundred and sixty-one thousand across our entire revenue base, it's approximately four percent. Four.
Four, four percent? Revenue base from Manhattan Beach?
Correct.
Okay, so four percent. So essentially, we've, we've given almost an average of that in the, in the last five years, right? To add, to come to twenty-five, twenty-four point two percent for all the increases. So, okay, great.
So, Mayor, I just wanted.
Thank you.
If this is working.
Yeah, that's all.
So I did want to call your attention to the letter that we sent. It's dated six twenty-six.
Two forty-four.
I mean, this is exactly what the director said. You could not approve this type of increase. It would have to be three steps. Step one, if this is the direction, that you can inform the, the businesses that this is something you're considering. But you need a, a contract amendment because the contract doesn't allow it at this point. It's just, it's so clear that there's no ambiguity. It says no increases based on labor costs, which is what they agreed to. And we understand, we're all sympathetic to think, with the way things have changed, but there's a process. So if you wanted to go in that direction, it would be, step one would be to inform the business community, this is something you're considering, amending the contract, and then you have to go through the Prop 218 process. But the contract will go at the end of that process. It won't go before. You'd have to go through the whole 218 process. At that point, you could amend the contract.
Your Honor, a question again.
Yes.
So you guys, other cities you work with that pass the same thing we're talking about tonight, do they also go through a 218 process?
We have agreements with sixty-seven jurisdictions, and they all have a different approach to Prop 218. Specifically, in the cities of Richcrest and California City, they had extraordinary increases for changes in the recycling market, and their language probably very similar to yours expressly prohibits an adjustment for changes in recycling markets. They both do follow a Prop 218 process for rate adjustments. This is several years ago now. The recycling crisis, I believe, was in 2018. So several years ago, and I think it was just part of their regular Prop 218 process.
Your Honor, if I could jump in on that, one of the things that, you know, had we known, collectively all of us known that the economy would shift so much over the last five years, had the city included, say, you know, an extra, up to ten percent over the life of the contract for extraordinary increases at the discretion of the council, if that had been embedded in our 218 process, you would have more latitude right now to respond to this request, but we, we did not do that.
Okay. Counselor, member, less.
Director Lee, you indicated that coming up next year, be around March, April, February, March, April, we will be exploring a new RFP for continuation of our waste hauling agreement. Is that right?
That's not correct. So we're, we're February, March, we're looking to come back to do another 218 process to cover the, the last five years, the maximum term under the existing contract with WM. So we have, we're going to have two more years that we're definitely under contract for. And then we've got three one-year extensions, and that, that next 218 process would cover all five of those years.
That's right. Thank you.
And then, yeah, as it relates to that, yeah, I want to make sure the, the council is clear that CPI is a number that we hear a, a lot in government contracts. We hear a lot on the radio. And oftentimes, our contracts relate to CPI of the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim area, which for the period that we're talking about, the last increase that WM got for the LA, Long Beach, Anaheim area, for just general, general goods, was three point five percent. But for our contract with, for solid waste with WM, we use the trash and garbage number, which is a much more specific number related to this industry and this line of business that we endeavor in. And that was a seven point three increase. And so I, I think, I, I want to make sure the council is aware of that because CPI is a lagging indicator. Obviously, COVID started in early 2020. And in, for fiscal year 21, we did a three point five percent increase based on that garbage and trash collection index. The next year was three point five. The next year was four point seven. The next year was five point two. This last year was seven point three. And while, you know, nationally, the economy hasn't fully recovered, I don't think anyone's touting that, this trash and garbage number keeps going up. And so I think that if this is something that the council wants to consider, you know, one of the, the, the variables you need to consider also is, come December thirty-first, we're going to get a new trash and garbage collection number, and we don't know what that is. And so potentially, if we go through a, a process to enact an extraordinary rate increase, that trash and garbage collection number could be higher than we, we've done and continue the upward momentum on that. And at some point, I, I would assume it will level off, but, but we don't know what that is. And clearly, WM doesn't know what that is too. But being the, the lagging nature of that, of that indicator, I, I think that's something that council needs to be aware of. And I hope I'm making myself clear. If you've got questions about that, happy to talk about it. But I, I think what we could wind up is a situation where we're sympathetic and want to go for an extraordinary rate increase, and then potentially end up in maybe a nine percent increase next year, maybe an eight percent the following year, and maybe eleven percent after that, because we don't know. And we're going to be obligated for those, those annual increases based on the language we've already agreed to.
I have a question, follow-up. The response of the city thus far to Waste Management or WM's request has been to seek a contract amendment, right?
Correct.
Because this request for an extraordinary increase is not provided for under the current waste hauling agreement.
For, for the reasons.
For the reasons that are the. What would that amendment include?
I, I think it could be as simple as striking one sentence out of that, out of that 5.5 section that says the, the wage benefit issues are not allowed. If we struck that, then we could consider them.
Beyond our longtime partnership, why would we want to do that?
Well, I, I would say that we, we certainly don't want them to lose money on our business because that's not good for them and ultimately it won't be good for us. So I think that would be the, the reason. And so while, while we do have a, a partnership, it needs to be advant, advantageous enough for them that they, they want to do the work.
Thank you.
To follow up. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So what Counselor Member Lesser is saying is we could give direction to seek an amendment striking that section or, or in 5.5 to get rid of the, we won't allow it for wage and benefit increases. That would be, that would be a remedy in this situation?
It, it could be, but I, I would argue, and although I didn't, I wasn't here when that contract was negotiated, that's a fantastic provision for the city council to make sure that the contractor is sharpening their pencil and giving you the best that they can. And so, you know, potentially, if, if you wanted to consider it one time, maybe we, we could add a provision for, you know, a, a limited duration of twelve months, we would consider that. And that, and that way, stop opening the, the whole rest of the contract to other wage and benefit increases.
Your, Your Honor?
Yes.
Thank you. And we've experienced this actually before. It, we can take the hard line, but when we've done that before, we've actually lost. Our street sweeping was an issue where they had to abandon it because they were making, they were losing money in, in quite a quick rate, and it wasn't sustainable. And we've had to backfill, and, and the costs going forward are going to be, you know, more than, than what we pay at the end of the day, and will continue to be so. I would, I would say two things, and I can put it in the form of a motion, but one would be to instruct staff, I can comment on the, on the motion, instruct staff to negotiate for an opening that is fair and addresses the needs of, of both the city and WM, while also concurrently WM reaches out to the business community to inform them of what they're asking for. And then that can come back to council for approval at a later date. And again, all this is subject to public input that we're going to have, but I just want to get off, some movement in some direction.
Your Honor, if I could respond to that, the upside of that for, for the city is there's actually some service performance issues that we would like to address that we, we haven't, we've been reluctant to address them because it would essentially necessitate cracking open that contract. And so we could, we could talk about what makes sense for WM and the city at the same time.
Your Honor, a question.
Okay.
For WM, you heard the idea from my colleague. Is that acceptable, something you guys would consider?
We appreciate any consideration and would be very open to having a dialogue about amending the agreement. As, as you mentioned, there are items the city would like to discuss, and I'm sure we have a wish list as well. So we would be, in any adjustment, whether it's by regular CPI or CPI garbage and trash or this type of CPI, we always provide notification. And that's Bobby's whole job, is to work with the business community on diversion outreach and this type of outreach. So we would absolutely reach out to the community, let them know the pain points of the agreement, and host workshops, whatever would be suitable.
Bring lunchboxes.
Yeah.
With lunchboxes, sure.
Okay, so. I'm going to open up public comments. Okay, so public comments. You're committed to two minutes, I believe. Anybody here to talk on this issue? It's not trash talk.
Street silence.
Oh, my God.
Okay, how about online?
We have Diane Wallace.
Hi, Diane. Can you hear us?
Hi. Thanks for.
Diane.
We can't hear you. Hold on.
Diane, just, just hold on a second. Can we bump up her volume, please? Okay, can you talk a little louder, Diane?
Yes.
There we go. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, trash talk is one thing. I have a question for Waste Management or WM. I'm wondering if this request for an increase in the fees is covering also a company goal to improve equipment that you're using for recycling. Specifically, in the area of plastic, you don't recycle a, a lot of plastic, and some of us have a contract with TerraCycle to take all the other plastic that you don't take and send to them. And then with the food waste, there are companies that actually accept food waste in recycled plastic bags, and that requires new equipment. So I'm just wondering if this request for an increase in fees would cover improvement in your technology?
That's a good question.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Do, do you want to address that, please? Yes, please.
No.
No. Okay.
No. We are making significant investments in our facilities locally to enhance processing, but none of that expense is burdened within the rates of Manhattan Beach. This is entirely related to the cost of service right here in Manhattan Beach.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to close.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one more.
One more.
Hi. As a resident and a business owner, I'm protesting now, saying no to this increase. The city council works for us residents here. You're not working for WM. And this request from WM is a no-go according to the contract. As Attorney Barrow said, there is no ambiguity. One way for WM to save money would be to immediately stop giving out free lunchboxes, and I say that in air quotes, while cute, our community doesn't need it. We just end up with tons of used and unused and even unwanted lunchboxes. I have four children, and they do light up, and they love getting more free stuff, of course. But you can, I have so many lunchboxes piled up in my, in my pantry that I feel bad getting rid of because this was from their kindergarten free lunchbox thing. I just looked it up, and they're called Bo Green Lunchboxes. They are anywhere from twenty-nine to forty dollars apiece. So that is really expensive. It's a lot of sixty-three cents. It's a lot of 63 cents, whatever, $6, I forget what the lady was saying. It's a lot of those added up. Maybe if they started there, that could help their bottom line. It's just a thought. I just don't think that we should bend over backwards to rejigger a contract with them when a contract is a contract. It's not, you're not supposed to rejigger that. I say no as a resident, as a business owner, and no more free lunchboxes. Don't do it.
Thank you for your comment.
There's no additional requests.
Okay, so we'll close public comments. Counsel?
So those who live in the city long enough, you know how hard it is to have one vendor take care of most of what we have. Steep streets is one thing, narrow streets is another. Trying to please Manhattan Beach residents on one end and the other is impossible. I will say this, first and foremost, as my colleague Napolitano mentioned earlier, anytime a city got too big for its britches and decided to change contracts with vendors, we've come out the losers every single time. I've been on council almost 16 years, I've never seen a victory by holding a principle, never. The last one we've seen here is a street cleaning, sweeping. Yesterday, Director Lee came and saved the day by moving that in-house, but it wasn't cheap, and it wasn't quick, and we heard about it. That's one. And our two attorneys here will tell you, there's a spirit of the law and letter of the law. Sometimes you follow the spirit of the law, do the right thing, you know, the contract says something else. You decide. Every time we follow the contract, we've lost by change of vendors. And who in their right mind is going to raise their hand right now in down 24 and say, in '27, the economy's going to be better, and all our prices will be less expensive? Raise your hand. Anybody? You're going to go out and get a new vendor in '27 and says, oh, yeah, we're going to get cheaper rates than we have now. What, someone that knows us and knows our streets, knows our city, knows what's going on? You're going to throw it all away on the what-if portion. Who does that? And the second portion Heather mentioned, well, they should keep themselves to the contract because I don't want, as a resident and business owner. That's fine. You get your chance to vote like everybody else, but we have hundreds of residents saying just the opposite. They email to us saying, we want this, want to keep them in play for what they've been doing and what they're trying to ask for. Director Lee gave you an option here, and he said, look, see, what other option? Napolitano said, we can bring this back in some way or form to make sure it's fair to both sides. We can address issues that Public Works has and W is has. Would you want to risk all of that because you're trying to follow a sentence and a contract? What's going to be more fun for the city? Taking a chance in '27, and we're going to come right back here and say, we should have done the right thing and fixed it back then and not took a chance on new vendors going to raise their rates that we have here? How many of you know what Senate Bill 1383 is? Or Assembly Bill, what is it, 1826? That requires, requires things to change, membership and costs. How many people in this room know that? No, not WM people, everybody else. What it is, those cost folks come from Sacramento down, not us up. We get all of that coming to us. So you have a choice. You could do the right thing, it doesn't sound right on paper, does it? Do the right thing and make a solution equitable to both sides, or say, you know what, they signed a deal, hold them to it, whatever happened in '27, we'll pay the extra rate. But I think the solution this council can make is find a fair choice and not burn that bridge 40 years of being here and take a chance in '27 that someone else will come here and double what you're paying now.
Is that a second?
Thank you.
Is that a second?
My motion?
I made a motion.
He made a motion.
Go ahead, make your motion then.
He made it.
I made it before. I'm sorry, I don't want to jump in, except I just wondered if that was a second, because the motion I made earlier was that we direct staff to negotiate an opener to the contract, which actually, it doesn't just meet the spirit of law, it can meet the letter of the law if we choose to change it based on what the negotiation is, because there's a list of things that we want to address, list of things they want to address, the costs included in that, and then also concurrently go out to the business community, notify them of the increase. Because the increase on the residential, I get 63 cents per month, not a lot. But it is going to be something to the bottom line of businesses, some of whom I know are struggling. So I think with those two things, and if anyone has a friendly amendment to that, I'm open to it, but that would be my motion to enter negotiations with WM.
Comments?
Yeah, I had comments. Not quite yet a friendly. Thank you. Here's a, I, what I had kind of proposed was we go in, and it's a bit of a contract opener in that we kind of reexamine Section 5.5. I worry about a true opener, and I'll tell you why. Because I think that we're, I hear that there's some service issues to address, but how much when we go in and open up the contract, are we even more vulnerable? Because, you know, it's, the whole recycling and food organics, we're actually, I think, getting a deal on as residents and businesses, so I worry that if we go in with, you know, openers, and I don't know how you do it legally, do we get two openers, three openers or whatnot? I think we're going to lose more on that. So I would, I really do want to, I agree with what Councilmember Montgomery said, and actually, Councilmember Napolitano, we don't, the leverage we have here is not, yeah, pounding our fists isn't going to really, is not a great idea. This is the largest contract we let in the city, and it's incredibly important. And it was amazing to me how many emails we got from residents saying how much they love Waste Management, how much they love what they do. That's great, you know, you don't often get that for trash. So I just, I, can I ask a question to Mr. Mayor of Bobby? Because it was, yeah, have to go to the podium? Come on. Come on. It's just a question. I'll be nice. Do you have you done any, I mean, do, have you done any outreach with the businesses to date or so far on this issue?
On a price increase? No, ma'am.
Right, okay, that's all, thank you. So, but he would. So I do, I do think, so I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Napolitano. I want us to do outreach to the businesses, but I also, I support this increase, and I worry about a true contract opener that we would lose.
Put guardrails on it. It doesn't have to be everything. I mean, direct staff, that it's either going to be limited, or the other thing is, bring us back updates as to what the issues are. I don't expect to see much more from WM, if you want what you want. And if we want a few things extra, because you're asking for an extraordinary increase, we get to ask some extraordinary issues as well. But I wouldn't, if I were you, I wouldn't go out and ask for a whole lot more.
Could I just make a comment? To get in on this? Okay, so as my colleagues have expressed, you know, WM is a great partner. I like the fact that they're moving to a fleet that's, you know, is it all natural gas or is it? Yeah, all natural gas, okay? So not only are they considering what they're cleaning up on the streets, but they're not adding, you know, pollution. And that's forward thinking, you know, regardless of the fact that they don't put in this equipment about the recycling. And that's a market-driven thing, right? They probably don't recycle every single piece of plastic because China, who was buying that, doesn't buy that anymore. And those calculations were made maybe a decade ago, when that recycled plastic market might have been more robust, and there was a market for it. Now there isn't. So we have to recognize that they're a business, and they're in it to make money and to deliver a good product. But I'm just circling right here on my paper, the price increases we've given over the last five years, with the last one being 7.3%. You know, there's an old finance rule, the rule seven, that at 7%, money will double in seven years, or so will expenses. So we've given them a total of 25, 24.2% over these last five years. That means ultimately, our rates, I don't even know how to calculate that, but it's going to be a lot higher than when we started in this contract. Nobody had a crystal ball in 2020, but nobody had a crystal ball for our residents, nobody had a crystal ball for our restaurants. And overall, I calculate that this increases 4% of the contract. That's something possibly they could absorb. I don't think they're doing this, you know, capriciously, there, you know, there's obviously some needs there. So I am in favor of Councilmember Napolitano's motion to go to our, go to the businesses here in Manhattan Beach. Listen, we've had a really busy summer, a lot of things have come up, including parking and things like that, so maybe it hasn't risen to their attention level. I also kind of want to think that Waste Management can do a better job of outreach. Nobody likes to go there hat in hand and say, hey, we're going to increase your rates, but, you know, let's work together on this, let's be open communications, let's be all good partners and negotiate in good faith, and then we can maybe bridge, you know, where we are here and find a happy medium. Councilmember Lesser?
With due respect, I'm a no. I am a no in moving forward in this direction. This is an end run around the contract that we negotiated, as the city, four of us on this council, negotiated this agreement, approved it in 2019. Absolutely, who could have anticipated the economic increases that occurred in the interim, the costs, the loss of the market in China for many of recyclables, of course. But we had other vendors that were coming to bid on this contract through an open bidding process that indicated that this contract would be difficult for Waste Management then, was their name, to sustain. This was the bargain we struck. This was the language that we worked on to protect our residents. I read 5.5, as our Public Works Director and our city attorney has described it, it does not allow this type of extraordinary increase. As has been indicated, and it was just indicated by the mayor, there have been steady increases over the term of this contract for the last five years, which will continue in the coming years, that are commensurate with the increase of the costs of their doing business. Increases on the basis of labor costs is not permissible under the terms of the contract. I'm not in favor of amending that. I agree with the mayor pro tem. Even though we may have service issues that we want to raise, to the extent that we reopen this contract, I think there may be other issues that we are going to experience. So with respect, I understand why there might be interest in this council to continue our longtime partnership with WM. They do serve our community well and have for many years, but I do not agree with this approach to upend the financial agreement that we had struck.
Great, thank you.
Let me make that clear. Another way is that I'm open to the idea of the guardrails that Steve talked about. I didn't know what they are, and then what timeframe are we talking about? We're not kicking the can in 2027, next thing you know. As council, let's sit on it for three years, and we're at the record we were before.
Timeframe is as determined between the parties. If people are motivated to come to an agreement, then they'll do that. And as far as outreach goes, I would start yesterday. That ball's in their court, and I think we want proof of service that they've done the outreach. I think they should be copying our staff on outreach to the Chamber, Downtown Business Association, and the North NBIT, so that we know that they provide them the information to distribute to their memberships.
My one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Councilmember Lesser talked about the fact that the Waste Management knew what they were getting into when they made the contract years ago, the prior council, which is true, and I was on that council. It was talking about the fact that the bid that they solicited was millions below the next highest vendor. Those of you paying attention to the council meetings, pull that meeting back up, find the next highest bidder. Look at how many millions of difference there were between one and the other. Look at that. Now, you can, like I said, we can figure out a way to get to solve for X here, where both parties can find a fair agreement going forward, but don't fool yourself. There's no way in hell that we're going to find someone else that gives us back where we're before and take a chance in '27 unless you, both parties come to a fair agreement. Fair, I'm not saying unfair to one or the other, we're being fair. We need to find that spot. And Steve's right, David Batista's on, Director Lee in, Public Works in the city, and WM to come back and say, hey, time's at S S for you and for us. Find a fair agreement, we will forward. If you don't, we don't, we'll look at someone new, and so will you, a new home in '27, and we're all going to pay that price. So I follow you.
Would you repeat your motion?
We have a motion?
No, I can't remember. Yes, the motion is to direct staff to enter negotiations with WM regarding their request for an increase. WM's responsibility, and in that negotiation, I see it more as one side, we know what they want. You want to bring stuff up, bring it up at your peril. I don't know what we want, but you should listen to them. And concurrently, reach out to the business community, let them know how they're going to be impacted.
Yeah.
Be very, very transparent.
I would second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Napolitano and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Haworth. A vote, please.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
No.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I ask a question related to that direction? Does the council want us to come back with a negotiated amendment for your consideration, or is there any desire to assign maybe the utility subcommittee of the council to work with staff to make sure that any proposed amendment comes back?
As long as I'm not on that subcommittee, yes.
Me neither.
Full disclosure, I am on that subcommittee. You can imagine what my position will be.
As am I. You might be stuck for a long time on that one.
I like the balance.
That would be, that would be a great combination, I think.
Yeah, it's fair.
A no voter and a yes voter.
Okay, then we start tomorrow.
Okay, can I agree?
I think they said yes.
Thank you.
Sure, but my position is fairly strong.
I'm speaking for them, but I think they said yes.
Your arm is sufficiently twisted.
Oh, it's good, it's fair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 10, update regarding the city's legislative positions on bills from the current statewide legislative cycle. George, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I would like to turn it over to Assistant City Manager George Gabriel for this presentation this evening.
Thank you, you said five minutes? Can you hear me? All right. Assistant City Manager George Gabriel, I'll try to be as brief as I can on this. I know we have another important item following this, but let me try to bifurcate this legislative update into two parts. One is on Assembly Bill 2309, and the other one is regarding updates to legislation going on through the statewide cycle right now. And so we do have a legislative ad hoc subcommittee with a platform guiding them, and that was approved earlier this year. And so with that guidance, a lot of these legislative advocacy items are under that purview. And so a big thank you to Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Pro Tem Haworth for their assistance throughout this process. So first off, on the Assembly Bill 2309 process, or bill, I should say, Assembly Bill 2309, for the public's knowledge, was sponsored by the city council to support or to authorize the city attorney of any general law city or charter city to prosecute state misdemeanors. The bill had great momentum in the beginning, it went through the state assembly, passed there without any amendments. However, when it reached the state senate, it got a variety of amendments, none that were ideal for the city and the goals. I won't go into all the details, but it significantly narrowed the scope of the bill. While the city was not ecstatic over those amendments, it was in conformance with the council's work plan on homelessness diversion, and so the city proceeded with that. And then most recently, the council or the bill went to the Senate Appropriations Committee. Last week, when it got heard, it got held in the committee, and therefore, the bill is no longer continuing, and is what is colloquially known as the bill is dead. And therefore, therefore, AB 2309 will not proceed within the state legislature, unfortunately. The reasoning behind that is that there were some costs that the Senate Appropriations Committee highlighted, particularly as it relates to court costs. And while we do not have any specific reasons as to why the bill did not move forward, because there was no public discussion, our state lobbyists suggested that it's likely due to the costs and the state budget deficit that is currently going on right now. So that's on the AB 2309. state budget deficit that is currently going on right now. So that's on the AB 2309 front. Regarding legislative positions that are taken by the city, just as a reminder, these positions are taken with the authority granted by the city council to the Legislative Ad Hoc Subcommittee. The Subcommittee has met three times or so within the past couple months, and they've taken positions on one letter of support, or one bill in support of, and five bills against. I won't go into every single bill, but the one that the city has taken in support of is related to e-bikes, and it's trying to enhance a lot of the regulations surrounding e-bikes. And this county in San Diego is trying to sharpen up a lot of the regulations, and they're trying to create a pilot program. And therefore, in the hopes that that pilot program, or those regulations can be sharpened, can be extended to LA County or City of Manhattan Beach in the future, the ad hoc subcommittees have the position of support on that bill. There is another corresponding bill that Marin County is also considering as well. The ad hoc Subcommittee is likely supporting that bill as well because it shares the same goals and the same aims as that bill in San Diego County. On the opposition front, there are five bills that the council opposed, and they're all related to local control and housing particularly. This is mentioned all throughout our legislative platform that was adopted by the city council. And that legislative platform highlights a lot of the concerns that the city council has indicated on the state's approach to housing particularly. In most concerning, a lot of the bills that are coming forward now are addressing coastal zone. And every bill that addresses local control issues that impacts the coastal zone and the city of Manhattan Beach, the Legislative Ad Hoc Subcommittee has supported opposing those bills. And so some of those bills, just for a quick reference, are AB 1886, removing a fundamental provision of housing element law that allows the city to disagree with the State Department of Housing Community Development. Another one is AB 3093, requiring, basically changing the calculation for defining extremely low income households and acutely and extremely low income households as a special housing need going forward. Another one is sponsored by State Senator Weiner, and that would basically, for jurisdiction within the coastal zone that is not identified adequate sites to accommodate the locals' housing need for a designated income level, require completion of any necessary local coastal program. So that will require a lot of changes to the city's local coastal program. And the last one is SB 1037, which would allow the Attorney General to take legal action against the city and seek a fine up to $50,000 a month for failure, failure to adopt a compliant housing element for the city. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go into each individual bill, but I thought it showcased some of the tenor of these bills that are coming out of Sacramento and the concern not only for the city councils' reference and notification, but also for the community's notification as well. Additionally, the Subcommittee did consider the most recent statewide proposition that is coming to the statewide ballot on November 5th, and that is Proposition 36. For reference, Proposition 36 is an initiative that, that passed, that is related to Proposition 47 that passed in 2014. And Proposition 36 proposes to allow felony changes and increase in sentences for certain drug and theft crimes. The Legislative Ad Hoc Subcommittee recommended this goal before the entire city council, and therefore this consideration of Proposition 36 will be at the September 3 city council meeting. With that being said, that concludes my report, and the staff recommendation is to receive and file.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Would you like me to say something on behalf of the Subcommittee?
If you want to say something, you go first.
I mean, I want to thank George and Patty Matson for, they research, like, so many bills that are coming before us. And we really, David and I spend a lot of time, but we look, we're looking at the platform that all of us agree to. So especially when it relates to local control or issues of housing, et cetera. And I also, we also ask our department heads, and especially for these housing bills, we ask Director Marisa Cahnian to weigh in. Would this, would this actually affect us? And it's like, uh huh, yes, quite a bit. And so it's important for us to take a stand, and it's the least we can do, and maybe we can even do more, but I think it's really important. So thank you for the excellent report.
Your Honor?
Just a general, open comment is, I want to echo what Mayor Pro Tem Haworth just said, and that is, thank you to the staff for spending the amount of time that we have and taking this so seriously. I think our approach towards this is to be judicious, to really pick those key pieces of legislation that have a direct impact on our community, where it's important for us to stand up and try and change the course of the legislation if we can. Because I think we also have a healthy skepticism of how powerful the almighty Manhattan Beach City Council's position is on these pieces of legislation. We, if we pick fewer pieces of legislation where we choose to take a position, I think we have greater authority. We've also, as you just heard, are indicating that those pieces of legislation or ballot propositions should be brought to the full council for determination and not just subject to what the guidance was that we received as a Subcommittee. So that's all.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you. Of course, shout out to staff, but I don't, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a big shout out to our Assembly Member Almar Succi for pushing forward the bill that we wanted. It didn't end up to be the one that we wanted, and didn't end up making it through. But before he was an Assembly Member, he was a prosecutor. So he understood what the issues were that local communities like us were facing, especially those here in LA County who weren't being allowed to prosecute certain crimes that we felt certainly needed to be prosecuted because of repeat offenders, because of the impact on the local economy, the impact on shoppers having to have things opened up and everything like that. And he got it. And it was just a tool to have in our back pocket. Unfortunately, there are revisions that were made, were too many to make it effective at the end anyway. So even if it had moved forward, it was in no way, shape, or form, the bill that was envisioned at the beginning. That happens, I get it. But unfortunately, it would have been ineffective to the point of meaningless, and put all the costs and burdens on the cities. And again, you know, we'll see what happens in November on several different levels, and maybe that gets addressed there. But I appreciate that he even took the time and the effort, made the effort to bring it up because he did believe that it was necessary and good. So, and, you know, us being the sponsor of it and everything was the right thing to do as well. And so something to keep in mind in the future, if there's any legislation we want to see, reach out to our local, and that's the importance of having good relationships with these folks, whatever side of the aisle you're on. Work together on local problem solving, not a matter of partisanship. And that's what he did, and it's, it's very much appreciated.
Yes.
I want to add to that is that although some people said, why are you wasting city time and money on this? I'm reminded, we're the little city that made that effort to fight for LA County. Cities that joined us from Beverly Hills on down, other cities across the state joined our efforts and saw, even though they weren't going to partake of it, they still jumped in to help, to support our requests to have this happen. Were we surprised it got killed? No. But the good thing is, we made an effort and tried, and now people are more aware of it. To Steve's point, maybe we can all make our own decisions in November. Wouldn't be moot point. But either, even though that happened in November, it gets the right way and the right circumstance, the solution, I should say, gets done in November. The good thing is, now they know we paid attention. They know what we did and tried. Yeah, we didn't get there, but they all saw what happened. And we got from zero to the finishing line. That's where it got cut off, but we still got there. Other cities didn't do that. So from ICA, Contract Cities, all of you that can and joined us, thank you, Legal Cities. Everyone else is behind us. That's important. But down the road, they're going to remember that we took a chance and put our name out there. So we may not win every single round, but we were out there. We were on the field at least. So we'll see what happens. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I'd like to add my thanks to Chief Johnson. Chief Johnson accompanied me up to Sacramento to testify to the Public Safety Committee on behalf of this bill. And it passed the, you know, by a very positive vote on the Public Safety Committee. And then Chief Johnson went up again, you know, to testify as it went through the various committees and steps and things like that. So that showed that we were serious about prosecuting our state misdemeanors. You know, I, I think fortunately, for many of us, our opportunity to correct this comes in November. And that's an obvious choice that the council decided with the two votes over the past couple of years, once we saw where the prosecution was going or not going for crimes. And that was a vote of no confidence. And then also then followed by a vote of the support, to support the recall of George Gascon. So now it's up to you, the voters. And make sure you learn about it and make what you feel is the right decision to protect your, your families, to protect, protect your city, and to protect your friends. So again, my, my thanks go to Chief Johnson. And she made very compelling arguments from the law enforcement side. So very much appreciated. Thank you. And so we, receive and file? Public comments? Any public comments here on this? No, online?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, so closing public comments, and we will accept it and file it.
You can receive and file.
And thanks for our reference. Okay. Number 11, consideration of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Bay Club Company regarding construction and operating of aquatic facility. So we have Acting City Manager Marisa Cahnian.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to turn it over to George Gabriel for the presentation. We also have members of the Bay Club present this evening.
And they're still here. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Franklin, members of the city council. So this is consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the Bay Club regarding the operation of an aquatic facility. And it's a related project in cooperation with the city as well. And I'll go into more details on that. But a couple, some background on this, obviously, the city council has been discussing Beg Pool and just aquatics in general. And so at the, that actually happened at the most recent meeting on May 7. And one of the key directions that the city council gave to staff was continue discussions with the Bay Club regarding their proposal for a new community pool. And so this memorandum of understanding is reflective of that. And so the MOU has a variety of provisions. I'm going to highlight some of the notable provisions for council's reference here. And we have representatives of Bay Club, and they can provide remarks on their behalf as well. Some of the key provisions of the MOU would, number one, the Bay Club will construct two swimming pools, one junior pool and one competition pool at various depths at 98 Park Place, Manhattan Beach. That the funding for the project to build the aquatic center is estimated between $10 and $15 million. Bay Club will work with city staff in developing the program experience, including accommodating select city programming. The aquatic center will be owned and operated by the Bay Club with special privileges for city residents. Bay Club will enter into a long-term ground lease for the, for the property on terms mutually agreed upon by the parties. City residents will be eligible to use the aquatic center for a daily walk-up fee only available to city residents with first priority for programs at the aquatic center for city residents. Bay Club will be willing to partially fund a solution for the Beg Pool with a contribution of up to $1 million. And that's the related project I was referencing in the agenda title. Upon signing the MOU, the Bay Club will order Phase One and as needed, Phase Two environmental reports on the real property at the Bay Club's expense. The city and the Bay Club will be solely responsible for each of their reasonable costs, including without limitation, expense of legal counsel and other advisors. And lastly, Bay Club and the city will work to immediately address whether sufficient parking exists for the aquatic center and whether after installation of an appropriate accessibility ramp, the initial proposed location of the aquatic center to be acceptable. So this, these proposed terms, I should highlight, are proposed terms. They are laid on the MOU, but obviously, there's another, this, all this says is that there's going to be another agreement that has to be considered by the city council. And so this sets the framework of that agreement that with, that are not necessarily binding per se. In fact, it actually says non-binding on the front of the MOU. But that being said, it's a spirit of cooperation between the Bay Club and the city in order to proceed with the next phase of considering aquatic facility. With that being said, I'd like to pass it to Matthew Stevens, the president and CEO of the Bay Club Company, if council would like. Is that okay? Maybe you want to just receive some remarks from, from Matthew Stevens, and then questions? And we have him on Zoom tonight. And I should say that EVP, I'm sorry, EVP Construction is the constructing apparatus for the Bay Club Company. And Matthew Stevens is actually on the East Coast on Zoom right now.
Okay. Do you want to?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, there we are.
We're good?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew Stevens. A little late there. Sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Matthew Stevens, President and CEO of Bay Clubs. I've been in the sports, outdoor recreation, and active lifestyle business for 38 years, doing business in the Manhattan Beach area for over 20 years now. And we, as you know, we have been the owners of the Manhattan Country Club since 2017. My apologies for not being in person, family vacation in Cape Cod, so apologize I wasn't able to be there in person. But we do have three senior leaders of the team in person to be available to answer questions, and I can do so also here by Zoom for you tonight. As we've discussed with staff, we did have the opportunity to go over to Beg Pool at the request of the staff, as well as spend multiple hours with the city staff talking about potential solutions for the aquatic center ideas that people have brought forward. As we have discussed with staff, the Bay Club Company operates over 100 pools throughout the West Coast, up and down the West Coast, from San Diego up to Seattle, throughout our 27 clubs that we have in market. We believe there's an opportunity to leverage this experience and work with the city to expand the aquatic programming through the creation of a new aquatics program at 98 Park Place. We look forward to continue in working with the city. First step, we were told, is let's get this memorandum of understanding in place and then roll up our sleeves. As we, as George has stated, we are willing to take on the cost for the environmental Phase One, Phase Two, and some of the initial testing. No expense to the city to try to make sure that this is a viable option. And we needed this step in place to take, to move forward with those other components. I also have Chris Birdwell, our Chief Development Officer, available if needed. In the room, you have Pete Jones, who's my EVP of Construction and Development for everything in Southern California, and is also the founder of the Bay Club Company, starting it in 1977. And you have two of our senior leaders from the operations side, Annie Batista and Ann Warden, who have, you know, Ann has been involved for over a decade and is one of our lead people that works on the wine, head foundation wine auction every year. So I know most of council is very familiar with her. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss this topic, and at this time, we'll take any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Montgomery?
Hey, Matt.
Hello, sir.
Hey, on your item number one of the staff report, it talks about everything else but operations going forward. Say the pool is built tomorrow. Does Bay Club cover all operating expenses once it's constructed?
Correct. It's, it's owned and operated by Bay Club with benefits for the residents of City of Manhattan Beach, but all expenses, both the capital and operating expenses are Bay Club's responsibility.
Perfect. That's the only word that's missing was operating expenses from that line. But thank you very much, Matt. Get to sleep. But thank you very much, Matt. Get to sleep.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser?
Go ahead.
Mr. Stevens, thank you very much for staying up late and for your availability this evening. This potentially answers a number of the desires of our community for a community pool. But I want to make sure conceptually for the community, we understand what the Bay Club would be getting out of this. The concept, if I'm understanding it, is that the Bay Club members would be able to utilize the pool during set hours. Can you articulate what you see as the benefit for your Bay Club members out of this agreement so we, as a community, could better understand it?
Great question. The structure that we've brought forward is that this is a, similar to our land lease that we have in operating the Manhattan Country Club. This is a land lease that we would do with the City of Manhattan Beach to build a private aquatic center owned and operated by the Bay Club. And then inside of that agreement would include benefits for the city, the residents of City of Manhattan Beach. As stated, a walk-up fee, a guaranteed walk-up fee that existed, Beg Pool would be available at the new aquatic center. Programming that's available at Beg Pool would be available at the new aquatic center. But different than Beg Pool, Beg Pool is a facility that's owned, I believe, by the school district on state land and has an agreement with the City of Manhattan Beach. This is an actual private facility owned by Bay Club with benefits that are specific for City of Manhattan Beach residents. And Bay Club will also sell membership access like we do for all of our facilities in the area, whether or not that's Manhattan Country Club, Bay Club El Segundo, Bay Club Redondo Beach. Does that help?
That helps. Questions I've already received have to do with parking for the Village Field, even though it's not expressly indicated. I imagine that level of detail will come up later, as well as impact on the Manhattan Beach senior villas and construction and otherwise. Any assurances you can offer on that, as well as, I understand there's some provision for helping us, helping the school district with regard to Beg Pool. Can you articulate those three issues, please?
Yeah, so the first step as far as parking and accessibility is what we've addressed in the MOU is to address that immediately. In all the different conversations we've had with city staff, no one knows whether or not this can be done yet. We're willing to dig in, spend the money, do the work and determine whether or not we can meet the parking requirements that everybody would like to see and be able to have the turf field and the aquatic center be able to exist there. We would do the work, meeting with both the village and the senior housing to make sure that they're comfortable that this is a positive versus a negative. We're not trying to stir up trouble. We're simply trying to see if we can provide a solution to the situation that the city finds itself in with the Beg Pool renovation. And so it was brought to our attention that this might be a solution, a site that could be solved. And we're, we've got our hand up to potentially be able to solve that process. So I think that addresses parking and the senior housing side of the world. And then as far as Beg Pool, look, we're, we are, you know, we operate over 100 pools. We've got a lot of expertise on it. We're not attempting to say that, you know, up to $1 million will renovate Beg Pool for the next 20, 30, 40 years. It just won't. But we also know that there needs to be some give back. When we sort of listened into the May 7 City Council meeting, you know, there were certain immediate needs that needed to be addressed. And so, you know, we're also trying to be good corporate citizens by putting our hand up and saying, you know, we're very fortunate to be the operator of Manhattan Country Club. This would be a good operation for us as well. We know we need to continue to give back to the city. We tried to do that through the head foundation structure, but, you know, we are very, very appreciative of the opportunity to do business in the City of Manhattan Beach. And we're trying to figure out how do we help in this situation, given our expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I have a question for our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Lehman. And that is, what is the status of the Beg Pool plans that we just authorized on May 7? What stage are they in? Because we gave direction to develop those plans, even though obviously there's not a funding source there.
Correct. And so the most recent direction was to put the place down on hold and move forward with negotiations with the Bay Club.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
This is a, hi, hi, Matt. Just a quick, quick, ticky-tacky question. Two swimming pools. One is a junior pool depth of three or four feet. But you mentioned competition pool of five to six feet. But folks that I've talked to that do kind of water competitions say it really should be six to seven feet. So is there, was that a conscious choice to make it five to six, maybe in terms of cost? Or is that an open, you know, because we're trying to get more lanes for things like water polo, et cetera. So just want to be sure that satisfies that.
I think that's, it's an open topic to a certain extent. We have stated that we need to make the pool depth for the competition pool at a level that would allow during social times for the community and the members of Bay Club to be able to use the pool in a social environment. If the pool depth is too deep, it eliminates that and therefore makes it a much more difficult economic business proposal.
Okay. That's, that's fair. That's, that's an answer to the question. Okay. What? No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, so hi, Matt. Joe Franklin here. Just want to ask a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for discussing this in good faith with us and, and potentially helping us through a very difficult situation. We value our pool time and we value our, value the training of our children to be water safe, especially with the ocean so close by. So it's really important. So just take me through a, what a typical day might look like, where we have Beg Pool and all of its programming. How is that going to lay over on, on the new aquatic center? And then give your, and then give your, you know, then the interaction with your club members?
So the generic answer I would give you on the, the operation of a pool, whether or not it's Beg Pool, a pool at Redondo Beach, a pool I have in San Diego, a pool that I have in Seattle, Washington, they all have very similar programming sort of demands to them. And so what our, what we've promised is to work out a deal, a situation through a sub, a lease, a land lease with the City of Manhattan Beach that sort of walks through the operational plan for the pools and making sure that whether or not, if Beg Pool is operational, plus these pools, that the amenities such as lap swimming, children's lessons, water aerobic classes, et cetera, that those services are provided and they're available. What we've put forward as the initial concept is, is that City of Manhattan Beach residents would have first priority for booking those amenities, followed by Bay Club members. If you happen to be a Bay Club member and a City of Manhattan Beach resident, that's good. You're fine. You, you, you still have, all City of Manhattan Beach residents would have the same ability to get booking. That feels like it's the same, at least to the best of my knowledge, of what's happening at Beg Pool. So we would program them, you know, there wasn't anything that I've seen in the Beg Pool programming that is any different than we do from San Diego up to Seattle, Washington, as far as the operating of pools. Does that help?
Okay, that does. Thank you very much. And I would assume that there are not really any competitive swim meets that could be conducted there.
Yeah. The goal is that because of the senior center there, that this would not be constructed with the concept of being able to accommodate swim meets of any size or scope from that perspective.
Okay, great. Good. And then, so in the parking, that would have to be, I'm sure, reconfigured of that, and that section of Village. I mean, do you anticipate, I didn't say it in the MOU, but would Bay Club members be able to use that parking, even if they're going to, to, you know, the club? Or is...
So I think the, we've got a different project in front of the Planning Department and City Council, which is a renovation of Manhattan Country Club. The, the concept is we have plenty, we'll have plenty of parking to accommodate our, our demands at, at Manhattan Country Club, which is next door. They can park in our, the Manhattan Country Club parking lot and access the aquatic center through a gate. But the concept isn't that Manhattan Country Club members would be parking in the aquatic center. At least, logistically, that's the thought process right now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. And to Parks Recreation Director Lehman, do you see sort of a, sort of a straightforward pull-up the programming from Beg and put it right down into this new proposed...
Well, there's plenty, there's absolutely plenty of demand.
I think it's...
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, there's absolutely plenty of demand, again, from swim lessons
to junior guard, to our Manhattan Beach dolphin swim team, to aqua aerobics. There will be ample opportunity and we will cherish every, every hour that we were able to have some communities at the Bay Club pools as well.
Okay. So, and just on a practical standpoint, the reservation of time, you know, in there. Bay Club resident, Bay Club members can use it and Manhattan Beach members, Manhattan Beach residents get the priority. Does that just say, okay, there's, let's just say, five slots available for Bay Club members? So they get to use those five slots, or?
I think all of these are still to be determined during the discussions. But again, similar to our registration process, all Manhattan Beach residents would have a two-week lead time for registrations of activities.
Okay.
Which is all about model.
Is that what they have now at Beg? Two weeks? You can reserve?
Prior to non-resident registration, correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, got it. And then my understanding is that this is not going to be available for non-residents. Is that correct?
I think that's, again, something to be discussed.
Yeah.
Actually, Matt...
If, if it's okay for me to speak up on this, just so we don't get off on the wrong foot on it, is that we, we have agreed that the City of Manhattan Beach residents would have first priority to booking, then followed by Bay Club members. We have agreed in concept that no, a non-member that is not part of Bay Club and is not a resident of the City of Manhattan Beach would not be able to access the facility. We have not discussed the two-week concept, though. That would be, that's something that's, we would be working on. That's not part of the, that has not been part of the dialogue right now. In our case, it would be a much tighter timeframe. It would be, you know, the, you can book a reservation and then it'll be maybe a three-day window, a five-day window, but it wouldn't be two weeks. But that's what this MOU allows us to do, is to start to work out all of the specific details, if that helps.
And, and that, and Matt, back to you, that $15 per day for Manhattan Beach residents, you said, for example. So that's not...
Correct.
Cast in stone.
Correct.
Okay.
We have not worked, we have not finalized any of those details. We felt like we were far enough along in the conceptual. We did schematic drawings of the pools. We got initial pricing of the pools. That gave us confident that we would be, this would be a good use of everybody's time to take the next step and see if we could pull this off.
Okay, great. Colleagues, any more, more questions?
No.
Well, because I want to leave it to the MOU negotiation. I, you know, I could ask questions all day long, but they're going to get into the details of the negotiation.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Well, we wanted to bring forth the salient points here. So, okay, so we're looking for a motion?
No, public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment?
We're good. You guys are working hard tonight.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Karen Kometinsky. I happen to be a Parks and Rec Commissioner. And I also happen to be sitting on the Beg Pool project for the last year. Just to give you an FYI, I know at the beginning of this discussion of the MOU, Mayor Franklin, you brought the word competition pool. That is a word that the public has been really bristling at when we looked at the Beg project, that the survey, all the public commentary, all the feedback that we've gotten through the whole year of conversation about Beg was that no, that the residents in town did not want a competitive pool. They wanted specifically a municipal pool. So I just, as you look at this MOU, I just want to make sure that you think about where that word falls in your language of that document, because it's not what the public has been telling us with Beg. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments here, online?
We have Diane Wallace.
Good evening again. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Stevens, thank you very much for joining our meeting, both you and George. And in the MOU, there is an address used, 98 Park Place. In Manhattan Village, HOA, there is a street called Park Place, but the addresses are 2 through 10. And when you Google 98 Park Place, the location of your facility ends up basically at 10 Park Place inside Manhattan Village. So, so I'm sure my neighbor Ginger would not like it on top of her house. But, but, and I'm sure it's not, that's not the right address. But I'm wondering, where exactly will this facility be located?
If you guys are, I could answer the question.
Sure, yes. Go ahead.
So the current proposed location, again, apologize if the address is incorrect. I think that's a communication error, and so we apologize. It is meant to butt be adjacent to the Manhattan Country Club fence, so that almost the two facilities are abutted up against each other from that perspective, is where the current location is going to be explored.
Hey, Matt, since there is a restroom facility there, I mean, is it, is it north of that then, would you, would you say?
North of the field.
Quite north?
Both the bathrooms.
You know that restroom facility for Village Soccer Field?
Yeah. So it's, if, if there were, there are about 50 spaces that are, were once upon a time assigned to Manhattan Country Club. Then with the associated Manhattan Village construction project, sort of went back to the city. It, there, it meant to be the, the layout of the facility is designed to be and where those 50 parking spaces are.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you. Any more public comments?
Yes, we have Jeanne Fratello.
Okay. Go ahead, Jean.
Oh, ah, can you hear me?
There we go.
There we go. Hi, it's Jeanne Fratello. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. The thing that really caught my attention was the $15 a day daily use fee. You know, I, I make a lot of noise about this. I do swim a lot. I know a lot of people who are very interested in swimming, but I don't think very many of us are interested in staying all day. And the $15 just doesn't really match up with anything that we're paying now. As you know, the, the hourly rate for swimming at Beg is $5 for residents. And over at the new El Segundo pool, it's $7 for residents. And you can trim that down a little bit if you buy a punch ticket. So as you go forward in the negotiations, I would consider, give more consideration to the idea of an hourly rate, and also the idea of a punch ticket, you know, where you could buy a series, and also the ability to reserve lanes for swimming. So, and again, I just don't, I, I saw the $15 per day and I just, that's not really computing for me because I don't know who's going to use that to stay at the pool all day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next, we have Lee.
Hi. I submitted public comments on this issue. I would like to have the Manhattan Village, HOA, and the senior village noticed about this. I don't think there's awareness that this is going on. Secondly, the address... Secondly, the address, as Diane mentioned, is not on Google Maps, so it's unclear where it is exactly. Is it, um, left of the Bay Club, or is it the lower mall parking lot? Um, and I was listening, I wasn't quite clear. Would there be a competition pool, um, or not? And, um, I think that's it. I think, I think just, you know, noticing the residents, we, where, what's going on, and we can, um, be engaged. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Lee. Uh, yes, and, uh, you know, we did hear it's not going to be a competition pool, and it's those, it's gonna cover those fifty spaces that are on the, uh, far east end of the Village before you get to the soccer field.
Nor, it's a north. It's north of the soccer field. It's not east.
N- n- no, but those parking spaces that are east.
The west of the fence.
They're west of the fence.
West of the fence. Only towards the mall.
West of Bay Club.
Yeah.
North of the...
Oh, well, okay. My perspective was here, that it's the eastern edge of that. Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the western edge of the Bay Club, it's the eastern edge of the Park View.
We're both right.
We're both right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and, uh, one other concern she had, I think we addressed this.
Competition.
Yeah, it's not competition swimming. It's social swimming.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, is it? There weren't...
There's no additional request.
Okay.
I, I did have a question.
So, we're gonna close public comments?
I'll make a motion now to your question.
Yeah, thanks. Just, thank, um, I think Karen brought it up. It does say in the language "competition pool," which was a pool I asked about. So it says "competition pool," but I heard Matt say "no swim meets." And so, I think, you know, I'm prepared to support the MOU, but I do think we want to, um, drill down on that. Um, you know, it's one thing for the city swim club to, you know, swim against itself, but not, you know, we don't want to have, to have that, so.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion here, kind of bring us back full circle. Hey, Matt, I appreciate you answering the questions, having your staff here. I know it's early in the process, we're not down to the, in the weeds yet about cost per day or hourly or anything else. This is just the first step, folks. We're not talking grand design here. Just get us off the launching pad. And it's a gift horse in the mouth. You're gonna pay city money to do this, now someone else has stepped up. Yes, it's on public property, but there's a trade-off here. So you want to use our money to pay for it, or you want to use their money to pay for it and get the benefit from happening here? So we're not talking about depth or pools or timing and all that. This is just, get us off the ground, conceptual design, worry about the weeds, stuff, details later. And everyone within a thousand feet will get a notice, right? Five hundred feet? Notice, wait, five hundred feet notice when it goes out? So here's a resolution I'm gonna propose. Adopt Resolution Number two-four dash zero-zero-nine-four, and that's our motion.
Second, third, fourth. I think I was first.
That was the other item, though, that Ms. Phillips brought up, was notification.
I wanted...
Hundred percent.
So notification, I also think we want to give direction to come up with some preliminary proposals to ensure we have parking, access to the field, we're clear about that, and then also the question of the, the fees that would be paid. There needs to be some discussion for the community and outreach. We really do need to notify the public that this discussion is occurring. We had some great outreach with regard to Beg Pool. We need to have some greater public outreach regarding this possibility.
As a matter of the motion, I'm gonna make it clear, we're gonna notify everyone then, five hundred feet? Is that the rule? Five hundred feet?
That is correct.
So, everyone's gonna notice five hundred feet when this actually gets started, folks. We're just off the launching pad. We're not doing it building tomorrow. Everybody get noticed when it gets ready. This is just moving it forward, first step. Stay up, Matt, a little bit longer.
Just a little.
Why?
Yeah. He's gone.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Montgomery.
I'm still here.
Seconded...
Ed Mayor, before the vote, staff had recognized, just like the two speakers, that the address is incorrect. Staff has informed me, it's the, it's thirteen oh-four Parkview Avenue in three different parts of the MOU.
Excellent.
So no to the motion.
Great.
Thank God for GPS.
Okay. And seconded by...
You, I thought.
Me?
You said, you said you thought you were first.
Okay. By, by Mayor Franklin. Yeah.
Call over the question.
For God's sake.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Yep.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, uh, moving on.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Get me a lobster roll.
Lobster.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. And, uh, so now, we've got item L, AB one, two, three, four reports?
Pas pour moi.
None? Okay. Uh, item M?
I have one.
Oh, future agenda items?
I have one. We, as a council, need to have a discussion about Manhattan Beach Neighborhood Watch. It's future, and some requests for city support, and I wanted to get a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Your Honor, I have one as well.
Yep.
Um, I would like to bring a discussion of a moratorium on the trash enclosure requirements that are triggered when business...
Stop right there.